All right. I guess this is close enough to seven o'clock. Welcome to the February 13th, 2019 Planning Board Meeting. A meeting, of course, is being recorded, as it always is. And, you know, so when you do get up, if you get up to speak for any purpose, make sure you get up to the mic, make sure you identify yourself so we get it onto the tapes. Okay. The first item of business tonight was to be requests to sign my LRS, 21 to 25 Quigley Ave. Apparently that's been withdrawn for the moment because the my LRS aren't ready, so I imagine we'll take that up next meeting. The second one is also a request to sign my LRS, 14 Alpha Road. And Evan, do you have any comments there? Is it pretty much ready to go?
We have a letter.
We have a letter? Okay. You want to get that?
Dear members, this office has reviewed the site plans by Whitman and Bingham Associates, consistent of seven sheets dated May 18, 2018, revised through August 20, 2018, and a stormwater analysis dated May 2018, revised through August 20, 2018. This office's concern have been met sufficiently, and the plans have been revised accordingly. We recommend endorsement of the my LRS. If you have any questions, please contact this office. Christina Papadopoulos.
Okay. It sounds as if we're ready to go.
A motion to endorse the my LRS.
Motion to endorse?
Second.
With a second? Further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'll take care of that at the end of the meeting. Now, we have two site plan reviews. First one is 21 to 29 Drum Hill Road. Hi, Katie.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. For the record, my name's Attorney Melissa Robbins. I'm from the law firm of Deshane &amp; Farrell. Also with me tonight is Katie Henwright from Howardstein Hudson. We're here tonight for a presentation of 21 to 29 Drum Hill Road. We're here for an application for a site plan review, as well as two special permits under your CEIOD bylaw. This site, this is a current picture of the site. This is located in the CB zoning district in Drum Hill. You can see that it's, we used to have Damien's Dance wear and the florist shop and a Verizon store in it. Currently, as it exists, it's about 12,440 square feet. It has two floors, retail on the first and commercial uses on the second. This is being permitted under the CEIOD, and it's being permitted as a SERP, which is a commercial or industrial redevelopment project. And that's because the entire building will be taken down, and the parking lot will also be reconstructed as part of this project. This is my first SERP under the CEIOD. It is smaller, the proposed building is smaller than the existing building. Can you give them the next one, Katie? There we go. Okay. The proposed redevelopment is actually smaller than the existing building. As proposed, the building will be 7,615 square feet. It'll be broken down into three separate components: a dental office, which is 3,512 square feet, a retail space of 1,404 square feet, and a fast food restaurant of 2,724 square feet. There will also be a drive-through component, which you can see has a very large queue line. And during the preliminary determination for this matter, the board was concerned that this could be Dunkin' Donuts, but I will assure you, and as a condition of the permit, this board can be assured, that this will not be Dunkin' Donuts, even though I think this queue, as you can see, would certainly allow for such a use on the site. The uses on the site as a SERP are actually allowed by right under your CEIOD bylaw, but we do need two special technical permits under your CEIOD. One is for the parking lot, which is in the front of the building. The CEIOD does want parking to go in the rear, but the parking, obviously, is an existing condition on the site, and it'll be well overdone with landscaping, berms, and will look much nicer than what exists today. The second special permit is for a drive-through in the CEIOD. I want to let Katie get into the technical aspects, and then I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Katie Henwright with Howardstein Hudson. As Melissa stated, this is a new proposed building of just over 7,600 square feet, broken up into three uses. We know that the large dental use at 3,500 square feet will have two dentists and will be Aspen Dental. That is something that this developer specifies in. We intend the Verizon store to come back after this development, which will be the 1,400-square-foot retail space in the middle. And then we're currently looking for a tenant for the end cap. We had spoke at length after the initial CEIOD applicability approval, and there isn't a tenant here yet, so what we wanted to do tonight was essentially permit it for the worst-case scenario. We're talking about anything from a fast food restaurant to a bank, so it could be, you know, a very small queue or a very large queue, as shown on the site. I think we spoke at length about how the drive-through would work on the site. The building footprint is essentially just a little bit bigger and in the same location than the existing building that's there today, although we're not building two stories. We're actually building one story to replace the building that's there today, so there's almost a 4,000-square-foot less building in the post-development than in the current existing development. The access around the site, we're looking to eliminate one of the curb cuts onto Drum Hill Road. It's our understanding that the engineering department and DPW's been trying to limit these curb cuts as different developments come in, so we have eliminated the curb cut on the right side of the current development, and we're looking to basically narrow up the one on the left. You can see the existing condition down at the bottom here. Also, if I flip through, you can see there's significant amounts of green space that's being added to this plan. So this is the existing site in the middle. This is the proposed site. So what we also did was consistent with other developments we've done along Drum Hill Road, we've added a 10-foot landscape buffer in the front of the site. We have a completely new parking lot and access drives around the site, and we've pushed the parking lot out in the back of the site into an existing gravel area that was to the back of the site along Old Middlesex Road. And that's the paper street that essentially runs along all the properties to the back of Drum Hill Road. We've tried to add some small landscape strips also on both sides of the site. On the left side, you can see currently it's parking to parking. It's essentially paved from building to building. What we're looking to do is add a small landscape island to break up the parking in that area and define better where the two current cut-throughs exist, and we're maintaining those cut-throughs. And on the right side, where there's pavement essentially right up to a short retaining wall that holds up McDonald's on the right-hand side, we're also proposing a small landscape strip along that island. Again, in the front of the existing building, there's an awning and basically some areas that could have been landscaping at one time but are currently just filled with rock and stone along the front of the building, so you see that there's no landscape areas in front of the building. So we're looking to provide a land, small landscape strip between the new sidewalk and the building itself, between there and the front doors. And certainly, as you drive around the site, we're looking at doing a one-way around to the back of the site, so there's two lanes going in the rear direction on the right-hand side of the building, and then two lanes going in the out direction on the left-hand side of the building. What this does is it allows us to, as Melissa stated, provide a really long queue. So there's 15 cars that's in that queue that don't interact with any, no parking, they don't interact with people driving around the building. They're able to sit in that long queue and not affect any of the other things that are going on in that parking lot, and you're able to drive by that into the rear parking lot. The parking lot's split between 24 spaces in the front and 24 spaces at the rear, which is the requirement at 48 spaces. One of the comments from the police department, which you'll read into the letters, which was something new for everyone I've talked to about this, is you have a general bylaw in the town of Chumsford that specifies more ADA, or more handicapped accessible spaces than ADA does. It's 174-5. So we're actually required under your general bylaws to add an additional handicapped accessible space here, even though we meet ADA and Architectural Access Board. So it's a strange one, but we'll be looking to add another ADA space to the site for that, which will reduce our spots to 47, which would then put us in noncompliance, but where we're a SEIOD, we would look to waive that one space for the subject site as we move forward. We've provided three dumpster locations to the back of the building for each of the separate units that are screened and surrounded by both a fence and by shrubs. And again, those cross connections stay. There's a small loading area that's positioned at the back of the building that's also surrounded Just to go through quickly, landscaping, and we can talk about the plants themselves, but we've provided nine new trees and 182 shrubs and grasses throughout. There's arborvitae's around the back of the dumpsters. There's a few honey locusts in the front with some different shrubs throughout the swale area that we've provided along the roadway edge. There's two additional shade trees and some additional small shrubs up against the building. We've provided small areas of shrubs along both sides of the green space of the parking lot to allow for, you know, some minor snow storage along those sides of the property. And then again, we've proposed landscaping, both trees and shrubs, in the landscape islands that divide the drive-through lane from the parking lot, and also essentially those back two corner areas where currently there is some scrub brush and some small trees. The lighting for the site, I'll flip forward to there, is accomplished by four 20-foot poles, so there's two poles at the street and two poles at the back of the site, and the rest is provided by wall packs around the building at 12 feet on the sides of the building. So as you get towards the building, those lights are provided by wall packs, and the front and the back of the site parking, lighting is provided by poles, and those would meet the requirements of the Chumsford Planning Board, being 4,000 or less Kelvin on the subject site. We have also done a traffic study, which was submitted yesterday, so I understand if you haven't had a chance to review it, obviously. In speaking with the engineering department before we did the traffic study, certainly while providing a fast food drive-through, we thought it best to check with them as far as what type of traffic study they might require and to what extent. So we did do new counts on Drum Hill Road at both site driveways that exist there today, and we projected counts for a proposed building containing a dentist, a retail space, and a fast food drive-through. So thinking that that's the worst possible case scenario that this drive-through would be, we have provided that information to you. Certainly, a lot of the traffic that goes by the site, of the 17,000 cars that drive on Drum Hill Road, that's both directions during the day, there is a little over 400, I believe, that go in and out of, would go in and out of the site. But a very large percentage of those vehicles, being a fast food drive-through, are cars that are already on the road. So they're cars that are going to pull in here as they're driving by because it's a convenience on the way to and from, to and from work or to and from events, which you can see laid out in the traffic study. The traffic study specified at the entrance driveway that, in the worst-case scenario, in AM Peak, we may have three cars trying to get out onto Drum Hill Road, and in the PM Peak, worst-case scenario was we'd have five cars trying to get out on Drum Hill Road. But with the light that's right up the street here at Parkhurst and at the low line, they believe it's very easy to have large gaps that cars will be able to get in and out of there at any given time. So certainly, we could have the traffic engineer, if you feel that's necessary, at the next meeting. I don't believe it shows any significant impacts or mitigation that's required as part of the report. Going to the building. Let me speak quickly to the utilities. I know you do have some utility letters in the packet. We do have a letter from Bruce Harper, and I've spoken with him personally about some revisions that we'll be making to the water line coming into the building. I've also spoken with your engineering department, Christina Papadopoulos, and we did some soil testing in the rear of the subject site, so we're going to be switching the drainage around slightly.
Yeah, he does.
So we're going to be switching the drainage around slightly in the site in the next week or two. We've met with them yesterday to discuss the revisions, and we'll be working through the drainage revisions, which are fairly minor in nature. We're actually reducing the amount of impervious surface on this site, so it's essentially a redevelopment, so we're trying to meet to maximum extent practicable, so we're essentially lessening the amount of both flow and volume that goes to both the rear, the rear of the site where Old Middlesex is, and also to Drum Hill Road while providing some recharge. We're looking to collect the roof drains and put those into a recharge system as to help that even more. We've also spoken with the fire department regarding the layout, and they've approved access around this building for the subject site, and you should have received that letter today. And then going to the building, this is the proposed building, so we're talking about a one-story building again. It's 19 foot 5 inches to the flat portion of the roof, 26'4" to the Aspen Dental side. The building is, it has brick veneer, stone veneer, ephes, fabric awnings on metal frames and metal coping, so it certainly has some different architectural stylings and elements that we see on a lot of new buildings in Chumsford, and certainly will benefit the site based on the current condition of the 1960s building that's there today. So you can see in this, you can see the glass facade, you can see the awnings, the signage for Aspen Dental is already etched on there. You can see the rear elevation with the three doors going into the rear of those buildings, and then both side elevations where the drive-through window would be, and then there'll be, also be windows facing the McDonald's side, which you can see on the other side. That was very quick, I realize, and to the point. Certainly, if we're here, if you have any additional questions or any concerns related to this project.
Thank you, Katie. We have some letters?
Water, Chumsford Retail Management, 21-29 Drum Hill Road, for the demolition of existing two-story, 12,240-square-feet structure, and construction of a new one-story, 7,615-square-foot multi-tenanted structure with one consistent of a fast food with drive-through and associated site improvements. See attached the letter. So the North Chumsford Water District has reviewed the applicant's proposal to construct a new one-story, 7,615-square-foot multi-tenanted structure at 21-29 Drum Hill Road in North Chumsford. The North Chumsford Water District will supply water with the full understanding that the applicant shall follow the rules and regulations of the Chumsford Water District and Chumsford Fire Department's requirements and agree to the following conditions. One, the new building will have a separate 2-inch domestic water service, and each unit will have separate water meters and separate backflow preventer. The 6-inch fire protection service will be protected with a State of Massachusetts-approved backflow preventer device. Each unit will be charged a domestic entrance fee and a fire sprinkler entrance fee for the square footage of the building. Three, the existing 6-inch cast iron water service must be terminated at the connection on Drum Hill Road unless the applicant decides to reuse a portion of the existing water main. For all materials inspections, overhead entrance fees, tapping of domestic and fire service, et cetera, will be coordinated through the North Chumsford Water District, and seriously, Bruce Harper, senior. I was reading this, and I didn't have to. Board of Health, see attached the letter. To the Planning Board of Appeals, I have reviewed the plan for the demolition and then construction of a new one-story building at 21-29 Drum Hill Road. It is noted on the plans that one of the occupants of the new building will be a fast food restaurant. Please note that a grease trap that complies with the state sanitary code will need to be installed if a restaurant will be occupying part of this space. Respectfully, Sue Rosa. Police Department, see attached the letter. Chumsford Planning Board, the Division of Special Services has reviewed the attached site plan for 21-29 Drum Hill Road. Upon careful review of the plans, the Special Services Division would make one recommendation. Under the Town of Chumsford bylaw, Chapter 174-5, if there are more than 40 but not more than 100 spaces, three handicap parking spaces are required. The American with Disabilities Act only requires two handicap parking spaces for between 26 and 50 spaces. However, the Town bylaw is more stringent. In reviewing the current plans, only two handicap parking spaces are shown for the total of 47 spaces, which would be in violation of the Town Chumsford bylaw. I've spoken with engineer Katie Henwright and advisor of the issue. If the developer adds an additional space, the police department would have, would not have an issue with the project moving forward. If you have any questions or concerns, please let me know, Lieutenant Colin Spence. Planning Board, Evan Belansky. I have reviewed the application and submit the following for consideration. One, addition of a pedestrian walk from Drum Hill sidewalk into the site and connecting to the front walkway of the building. Two, where is the order menu board located and what does it look like? Three, what kind and where are proposed lights for the drive-through? Four, additional street trees should be planted along landscape buffer with Drum Hill. Five, while the number of parking complies with 48 spaces, if there is an opportunity to place some into land bank to create an outdoor seating area, this amenity should be encouraged. Six, exterior elevations, use of awnings if not already proposed is encouraged. Seven, in lieu of requiring a full traffic study and/or mitigation, consideration should be given to have this expense contributed towards the 53G traffic mitigation account for Drum Hill. And SWORD, this is, the office has reviewed the site plans by Howardstein Hudson, consistent of nine sheets dated January 17, 2019, and supplemental data reported January 2019, revised through February 2019. As a result of this review, this office has the following comments. One, this department shall be notified when work on the site is to commence in order to arrange for inspections. Two, any revisions to the drainage system shall be submitted and approved by this office. Three, the stormwater operation and maintenance plan shall be followed as described in the report. Copies of any inspections and/or other reports done in accordance with the plan shall be forwarded to the engineering office. Four, a site as built shall be provided upon completion of the work on-site. As-built to include a letter from the engineer stating all stormwater devices have been built to satisfy mass stormwater standards. Provide all support and documents and calculations. The as-built shall be from a ground survey and submitted in AutoCAD and paper form. Five, some soil testing was performed on-site. Based on the information gathered, modifications to the drainage design are required prior to approval. Six, confirmatory testing shall be performed in the area of infiltration per the stormwater management guidelines. Testing shall be witnessed by the Chumsford DPW Engineering Division. All unsuitable material, if any discovered in the excavation for the infiltration system shall be removed and disposed of in accordance with state and local regulations. Seven, the project requires a NPDES Construction General Permit. A final copy of the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan must be submitted to the town as well as filed with the EPA prior to beginning any site work. Eight, the proposed sewer work will require permitting and applicable fees from the DPW Sewer Division for connection to the municipal sewer system. Nine, a road opening permit is required from the Chumsford DPW Highway Division for the work within Drum Hill Road right away. Ten, trench permits shall be filed as necessary per 520 CMR 14, Chapter 82A. Eleven, the design engineer has received design and drafting review comments from this office. If you have any questions, please contact this office. Christina Papadopoulos. And lastly, the fire department. It's a long one. Dear members of the board, the water supply appears to be adequate. The required pressure and flow shall be confirmed by a current water flow test performed proximate to the site, with all calculations submitted to this department for review and approval. Hydrant locations shown on this plan are adequate. The Chumsford Fire Department requires a hydrant within 60 feet of the fire department connection and a hydrant within 500 feet for manual firefighting operations. Hydrants and fire protection equipment shall be free from landscaping obstructions. This office received an update plan from project engineer Katie Henwright of Howardstein Hudson on February 12, 2019. Access for firefighting apparatus and emergency vehicles shown on this plan is adequate. This plan shows a reduction in the island size at the entrance of the drive-through lane and where the lane passes behind the building. All fire lanes shall be marked with approved payment markings and/or approved signage. Fire apparatus are able to access all sides of the structure. Fire apparatus access shall be designed to withstand the weight of fire apparatus. This department has concerns on snow storage areas located on both the McDonald's side and the Casey Family side. Snow storage in these locations will negatively impact fire department access and the general flow of traffic. This department requests that, due to the site-specific conditions and as a condition of the permit, the planning board require all snow to be removed off-site. The dumpster locations shown on this plan is adequate. Egress requirements will be assessed upon the submission of building plans. All exits and exit discharge shall have a continuous paved path that leads to a public way. An automatic sprinkler system conforming to NFPA 13 and a fire alarm system conforming to NFPA 72 shall be required. Both systems shall be monitored by UL-approved Central Station Monitoring Service, and all components in fire protection systems must comply with the state building code and Chumsford Fire Department requirements. Building plan submissions shall comply with the state building code and the Chumsford Fire Department requirements. All equipment related to fire safety shall be located at the discretion of the Chumsford Fire Department. The applicant is advised that testing for emergency radio responder communication and, if necessary, installation of a bid directional amplifier system shall be required. The applicant must submit an application to the Town of Chumsford E911 Committee for addressing unit number and through its coordinator, the town clerk. This officer would approve of this plan with these conditions and changes, and I ask the board to make this letter part of their approval process. Respectfully submitted, Daniel J. Katsufus.
Okay. Thank you. All right. That's quite a file. Katie, would you like to make any comment on any of those before we go around the board here? And then we'll open it up.
Just for your knowledge, I think we've agreed to everything in all of those letters.
Okay.
So we've had discussions with each of those departments personally, except for Board of Health, and we've had, we're going to address everything.
Okay. Got you. Thank you. Okay, let's take it around once, and then we'll open it up. Anybody want to?
Will be started?
Yeah.
Have at it. All right, Katie. The left-hand side of the building, it shows, and the right-hand side of the building, you show 20 feet, but you've got a parking lot in there, so you're basically allowing a 10-foot drive-through area? And you're expecting to snow, put snow within 45 inches?
So what I was, what I was saying is, I mean, we just addressed all of the, basically the areas around the building as snow storage. So if there's a tiny little storm, they're going to push it to the side. Obviously, if there's a big storm...
The other day, when you said a snowstorm was only two inches, but the stuff was...
Yeah. It was nasty.
As I already said, I don't have a problem with the fire department's comments, so we will take that notation as a drawing.
I was also looking at the island at R3. You know, basically, you're having snow stored against snow stored where you got a 10-foot clearance. I just don't see that being enough. I see spillage coming on both sides and not, not being enough.
We're, we're going to take that off the plan.
Okay.
All right. So how many parking spaces did you have before, and how many do you have now?
Yeah, 32, 32 previously and 42, 48 now. We'll be 47 when I come back.
Yeah.
And you know the 53G, right?
Absolutely.
The other snow storage out in the front, where they're asking you to put trees out there?
Yeah.
Right.
It's, it's not going to be pretty.
Trees aren't going to be happy.
No, but I mean, we're trying to make that whole corridor look nice. I just see trees, trees being buried in snow, but...
It's actually a drainage swale, too, so, like, like on the property next to us.
Yeah.
So...
But I know the vision of what we're trying to make that place look like, and the vision of what we're trying to make it look like is probably what it's going to end up looking like. All right. I'm, I'm set.
I'm going to jump right on board with Henry here with the, with the snow storage. Looking at the plan, there's basically no snow storage on this plan. You show it, but there's nothing. Every place that you got snow storage, you got landscaping, you got trees and shrubs in there. I think you could probably put it in as a condition to remove the snow after every storm.
We already agreed to that, based on the fire department's letter.
I'm surprised. I'm surprised the fire department's happy with a ten-foot lane, to be honest with you. Residential, we're adding fourteen.
Right. The drive, the drive-through, I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, I didn't like the, I didn't want it to turn into like the Dunkin' Donuts on Drum Hill where you go to back out of one of these spots in the front and the cars are wrapped all the way around to the entranceway and people that are parked there can't get out.
Yeah, that's why we have a fifteen-car queue before.
You got an eighteen-car queue with the Dunkin' Donuts.
How? They're, they're so close, they're, they're five cars away from the road.
The building's the same wrap all the way around.
Oh, on Chumsford Street?
Yeah.
I'll check there, but yeah, we don't even impact the parking until probably we're our sixteenth car in on this. And we don't even know that it's going to be fast food. That's just the worst-case scenario.
I just, I don't, I don't, that's the only reason I don't like the, the drive-throughs when they cut in between parking spots. Because you, you're going to park in a parking spot and now this is backed up, you can't get out of your parking spot. So, you sit there until somebody's nice enough to...
I just think a fif, anything longer than a fifteen, you're never going to see a queue longer than this. This is the longest queue I've ever seen proposed anywhere that doesn't interact with the parking lot.
Over and look at Dunkin' Donuts, it happens every day.
And we're already promising you that this is not Dunkin' Donuts, so. And you can condition that.
Yeah.
We don't have a problem with that. If it turns into a Dunkin' Donuts, we'll come back before you with a new traffic study and, and a new layout.
That's all I get.
Tom?
Yeah, actually, I am concerned about the snow, but you already addressed it. As far as the drive-through goes, yeah, allowing for fifteen cars, that's a lot, but I think part of what's going on over the Drum Hill, the Dunkin' Donuts there, is they don't queue up in the parking lot, they queue up on the street. So, that, that's a little bit different than, than what's being proposed here.
I said Drum Hill, I was talking to one, Chumsford Street, yeah.
Yeah. So, like Glenn, there is somewhat of a concern about the, the amount of cars that might queue up for the drive-through to wrap around the building with the parking right in front there. That is certainly an area of concern. To Evan's question, where would that menu board be? Do you have any idea?
So, we've shown it at the, at the back corner of the building. Basically, right here, there's a menu board.
Yeah, there's the order board, yeah.
It shows up. It's on your plans.
But we don't have a restaurant, so my, my thought process was that it would be somewhere along this back face that people would order and certainly after they order, they're not going to want to be the tenth car back, so they're going to want to be somewhere in this vicinity.
Is there agreement with the abutter and the, on your left side there to, to have the egress come out there and use his property that way?
For which? For egress how?
It's just two cross, these two cross-connections are there today. These exist.
Right, right, but it's all open there. I mean, that's just like...
Well, there's parking, though, that faces each other here. So, this is the only area that it's open.
It's not marked well now, I don't think, so it's kind of like...
There's strafing here.
I like what you've done there. I mean, I like what you've done, for sure. I, I like that.
So, we kept it open in, in the, in the vein that we're looking to keep cross-traffic.
That may happen today and allow cars to not go back out onto Drum Hill Road to come into each and every facility.
And COI encourages that.
Encourages that. So, we just left them open.
No, no, that's a considerable improvement, though, adding the landscaping there. Other than that, I don't have any questions.
Tim?
Evan talked about sidewalks there, so is there an entrance into the property from a sidewalk or you have to walk into the traffic?
We can add a, we'll add a sidewalk into the site.
Okay.
Right now, we're basically, there is a sidewalk along the frontage now, which we're going to fill in at the existing driveway that's on the north side and it closes to McDonald's. We're going to fill that in with sidewalk and we're going to actually lessen the size of the curb cut that's at this site, so we're keeping one side of it and, and readjusting and reconstructing the other side.
So, you could always open up and put a sidewalk in between there anyways. And I definitely would be against the snow removal into the front area, so I'm glad you're addressing that because I think it would take away from the building and everything else. The drive-through really doesn't bother me. I think you do have a lot of cars, but I, I can see Dunkin' Donuts, but knowing it's not going to be that, I don't think I have an issue with it. And I do like that it's still open, so you can go from business to business. So, that's all I have.
Okay.
So, the only question, a couple of questions I have is the, and you've talked about the cross-connection, so I was not aware that the COI is encouraging that. But does your traffic report entail and look at that, how much cross-connection traffic vehicles are going to go into the neighboring property versus coming out on Drum Hill Road? Did they address that?
No, and there's really no way to address that because there's no traffic model that you can say that says people are going to go from one business into another. So, basically, we looked at it based on the two entrances out onto Drum Hill Road only and counted what comes in and out of there.
So, everyone that's turning east on Drum Hill Road and there's a backup of one or two cars, anyone, everybody else who's heading west is going to cut through the Keys property. They're not, there's no room to wait. There's no room for two lanes going out. So, they're going to, they're going to, they're going to cut through the Keys property.
Cars to wait, and they very well may be, and there's two additional curb cuts on that side, one with a right turn and a left turn and one with a right turn only. They very well may, but we'd be happy to close it off if you feel that that's necessary, but we were leaving it open for, based on the COI and based on, we did speak to the owner next door about the cross-connections, and we believe they benefit both properties.
Okay. So, I would think with a drive-through, you're going to have a much more vehicular traffic than what's currently there. And if the next-door neighbors are fine with that, I, I don't think it's an issue, but just bringing it up is a concern. And the other item that I had was regarding the, it would be nice to see more trees, fully grown trees, between the two properties on either side. Whereas you have them right now right up against the building and then you have them in the back. So, the look, we're trying to look up front, they're not up front.
There's not enough room between the two properties.
They'll die.
And so, what we've proposed is some shrubs that do grow fairly tall and some long grasses to allow for some height between there, but there's only four feet of green space between parking lots where there's currently none. So, we're trying to put some greenery in there to break it up, but a tree is not going to make it in that little bit area.
Which is not enough exposed root area.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. In terms of along the frontage trees, could you add a couple honey locusts in there since you already have some?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It's, it's probably the most compatible with the, the design that you've got and they're light and airy and you can see through them and, you know, see your storefronts.
Absolutely.
You have a loading area that is in a, in a pocket between the building and the queuing area.
Mm-hmm.
What kind of traffic, kind of vehicles do you expect to be using that loading area?
Right, just small box trucks. We don't expect anything large. So, they'd be able to turn in, go around the building and then back into that space when the drive-through is not being utilized or somebody would stand there and obviously make sure that they could back into the space. We see that a lot, it's actually like that, I believe, on Chumsford Street at that Dunkin' Donuts, just to get you close to the building. We could certainly put it on the other side of the drive-through, too, if it made sense, but I think it makes the most sense in that location. And if somebody has to get out and stand there and make sure one person goes by, so they have a chance to back in or come in off hours, I, I certainly think that can happen.
Okay. So, you're not foreseeing any businesses in there that would require tractor-trailer?
No.
Docking?
No.
Talked about the honey locust, you guys talked about the sidewalk connection, bicycle rack?
Yep, we forgot it again. We will add it.
Here? Is he here to tell me to put it on?
Tom's usually here to tell me to put it on.
And I can't find anything else that you didn't manage to cover and tell us about.
All right. Bike rack, yep. Good.
Y'all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. No, you got almost everything on my list, of course. You know, our penchant for asking for low light temperatures, I'm sure you've got that figured out. One thing that did show up, it was mentioned in the DPW's thing, had to do with potential modification to your drainage setup. I didn't know quite what that was all about.
So, what we're going to do, so we had originally planned the drainage in the rear of the site in this area, and we had a little problem with our topography on our existing area. As you can notice, it's different here than on the plan you have before you. There was a couple spot shots that were incorrect, which we figured out last week. And essentially, when we dug holes back here, the water table showed up pretty similar to auto fair, which is three feet.
Oh, boy.
Makes it a little bit difficult.
Yeah, it does, doesn't it?
So, what we're going to do is we're going to, we've, we've basically looked at this area, this area can sheet flow to the back, this area can sheet flow to the front into Drum Hill Road, and we're going to capture the roof, which is clean water, and put it in. Basically, we wouldn't need any drainage to meet the requirements of redevelopment, but we're grabbing the roof and we're going to infiltrate the roof right, right behind the building in this area here. And so, we spoke with engineering yesterday and proposed the design in conceptual phases. They agreed that it was going in the right direction and to finish the detail on that aspect of it. So, essentially, we're taking the infiltration area here and moving it along here, and because we're putting clean roof right into it, we don't need to meet the two-foot separation between water table.
Got you.
And the bottom of the system, so it nicely fits right in there and we can grab the whole roof.
Pretty good. Okay, anything else from the board before I open up the public portion of this meeting?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Sure.
Katie, on the lighting plan?
Mm-hmm.
I apologize, but my electronic copy isn't loading and for the life of me, the hard copy's too small for me to read.
Yep.
Where on this lighting plan does it tell you the color?
In that really teeny, tiny print on those large sheets on the side.
I can't see.
So...
I'm sorry.
And I think we actually like...
Where's the spec?
See that we, we drew?
Oh, okay.
This is where it says the, the four thousand or less.
Thank you much.
Yep.
So, it's in there?
It's in there.
Good. All right. Covered? Okay, this being a, a public hearing, I would open it up to the public. Does anybody have a comment or anything they'd like to say about twenty-one through twenty-nine Drum Hill Road? Anything at all? Looks like it's all there to me, too. Okay, in that case, one more shot. Yep.
Hank, Hank, Hank.
Yeah. I'll get to Hank, yeah.
Good evening, my name's Scott Romo, I live at twenty-four Love it Lane, and I'm not sure if this is the right forum for this question, but I'm kind of concerned about the economic impact, right? We're taking away fourteen thousand square feet of commercial and we're replacing it with seven, so I'm just kind of curious if, if we know what the economic impact is to that to the town.
Well, what I could, what I think we could say is that's going to depend very much on the nature of the things that go in there. It sounds like they may be fairly high-value.
The condition of the property now is value, rental value is not even...
It's real low.
Right, and I can address that quickly. This building was built in nineteen sixty, the existing structure, and not all the commercial space is being used, so this new building will actually be a, a higher tax base and we think that it'll be fully rented out.
Got you. Yeah, I would imagine from the look of it. Okay, good question.
So, I've got a quick question. Is the opinion of the owner that the second floor has little value?
Especially with this use, there would be no value to the current owner. They're going to use, the dental space will be their biggest space and then the retail and the restaurant or other use, but there's no value to the commercial space whatsoever on the second story.
Yeah, Tom, the other, the other consideration there is that these uses, as they're, they're defined, need all that parking.
That's correct.
So, if you added extra use, additional uses above it, I mean, I was concerned about the same thing, but they just don't have enough space on this property to put in enough parking to support a second floor.
I'm more focused on the particular use of that space as opposed to parking, if there's any marketability for a second floor.
No, especially where you know that the, the second floor here is not fully rented out now, you can probably predict that it won't be rented out if we reconstructed it that way. And Nancy's correct that we also are maxed out at parking right now, we don't want to reduce any parking, so we wouldn't have any additional parking space to accommodate that use in any case.
All right, thanks. You had another comment?
No, just one, we were just discussing, a quick discussion. If there's patients parking in the back and you've got drive-through traffic going off two, three sides going to the drive-through, is there a sidewalk for the pedestrians in the back to walk to the front?
No.
Are they going to walk and dodge vehicular traffic, two lanes coming both ways?
I mean, most likely, most likely the rear of the site's going to be employees first and, and only, and the twenty-first basis in the front of the site would be for customers, but there may very well be people that need to walk from the back to the front.
Usually, employees have to.
Yeah.
What's that?
Usually, an employee, if he's out the back, still has to get to the front. You only get a ten-foot wide space there.
No, exactly. I mean, we're trying to replace...
It seems very tight.
Yeah. Yep, but we're trying to replace, again, we're trying to replace it with an economically viable solution on one floor with adequate parking and a site that currently is paved from side to side, front to back with a two-story building on it. So, there's, there's no room for, if we would take out the landscape strip and put in a sidewalk, which we can very well do on the right-hand side, if that makes sense to this
I'm also looking at the building and there's, there's back doors to all of these units, which I would certainly expect that your employee base is going to be using as well.
I'm actually just looking at that plan, too, how a fire truck can actually, so if you have a fire truck that responds there, you're coming in, you got to take a right going into the front of that building, right?
No, the fire truck can go any way it wants to. The fire truck radius that the fire prevention officer approved comes in and does this.
So, he's, they're responding to this, the first truck doing, they're going to do what?
They're going to come in, they're going to go the opposite way.
Where, I know, but you're, you're just going like that, like where you're...
They're going to go the opposite way, they're going to do this.
They're going to go the opposite way.
Yep, and I discussed this for a long time with Dan, Dan Kay, and that's, and that's the fire plan that they have approved and that's, we had a discussion about it. They're going to come in, they're going to stay on this side, too.
I'd rather see you shorten that thing on the right so that a truck can actually take a right versus try to, what if you got two cars coming down there? I mean, it...
They're going to be sirens a-blazing and there's on all sides, there's pavement, and all sides, there's pavement. We had this discussion yesterday, I went in and saw him and said...
Well, we're having it again today and we're, you know, talking about it. So, now, my other question is, now you get the fire truck there, right? It's got to do its loop like we just talked, like you showed us. So, he's got to come around. Now, there's other trucks responding, so they do the same thing? Is that the method for all of them?
Quite possibly, or they could park here, or they could park here, or they could park here. There's pavement everywhere.
I, I'm well aware of it, but...
Within hose distance.
It's still, it is very, very tight. And I honestly think that Dan Kay should look at that turning radius because I...
He did, but actually, there's a little piece that's coming off here and a little piece that's coming off here just to make his turn a little bit easier.
So, you are adjusting that?
Very slightly, this island and this island slightly, to address his comments from yesterday.
Okay.
Okay.
This building's also going to be sprinkled where the current two-story building on site is.
That's not right.
Which is certainly a big...
Definitely an improvement, there's no doubt about it.[1666.54] Definitely an improvement, there's no doubt about it.
Okay. Hey, uh, Hank, do you have anything you wanna pipe in on?
Yeah, I'll throw my two cents at this.
Sure.
Um, I'm not happy with the twenty-foot roadways, I'd rather see less green space, I know you never hear that, but I'd rather see a wider road.
Okay.
And to Tim's point, you wouldn't need that, when, with the snow plowing, there's no, no storage there at all, so, um, right now, you have it in the rear of the building, I was by there today, and there's a fence along McDonald's, so, you know, you're not, you're better off getting rid of the green space where the cars are queuing up, and have a wider access road up, and that's just my opinion, because a fire truck's not gonna fit through that. Also, you, you can't just unfire, like Timmy's point, you have a medical, the dental place, you're gonna have an ambulance, you're gonna have a paramedic truck, you're gonna have two cruisers and a fire truck, there's gonna be a lot of trucks there, and you're not gonna be able to cross the fence, and you're not gonna go from another parking lot, walk in. So, he had a valuable argument for that.
Yeah.
But I think the twenty feet's kinda tight, in my opinion.
Okay.
Good.
Thanks, Hank. All right, some more public? Wanna make sure everybody gets a chance? Okay.
You wanna close the public hearing?
Sounds good to me, if it does to you.
I'll give you a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now we're down to the decision point.
Do you wanna-
I think they got some issues that they need to take and bring back in front of us, I don't think we should have any rush to take and do this today.
Which ones were you-
What's, what's, what's our list? We got a list that we wanted, we had the menu board, we had the fifty-three G, we had, all this stuff needs to be in writing, we're not-
Menu board's in here, it's in the plan, it's done.
You got a picture of the board in there, that's what Evan asked for.
Yeah, I think we can do this-
A picture?
Evan's saying is, what does it look like?
It may not be designed yet.
You can't do that until they have a tenant.
Yeah. On a, on a tenant. I'd like to condition no snow storage on the site.
Okay.
They already-
And I'd like to condition high-volume drive-through tenants that move in, need to come back to us to talk about that, um, that drive-through, the queue.
Okay.
I actually thought Hank had a good idea, but the right here inside, where you got a, a cement wall all the way back there, getting some more space in there.
Yeah?
You know, I thought that was a val- valuable point, I mean, they're using it for snow storage, but it, it's tight.
No, they said they're not using it for snow storage, that they, that they-
What does it say right on the plan? What does it say on the plan?
They said that they agreed to meet all the conditions in the letters that were generated.
And that included getting rid of the snow storage. And that includes not having snow storage on site.
And there's no harm, there's no harm in stipulating.
And they can haul it all out.
And you can, you can certainly stipulate line items from those letters.
All I'm looking at is, like, you were involved with a project that this engineered down the street, and we were told there was no inventory parking up behind there, guess what we got now?
Ah, I see.
Um, we're getting quite a, quite a few things like that.
Okay.
That would work.
It, you know, I mean, I just don't wanna let the, the, uh, you know, I'm trying to make sure things are done the way we want them to be done. Great-looking plan, absolutely fabulous, Katie does a great job with the plan, um, we have had some concerns about that ten-foot.
This is a chain link fence there.
Um, we have a, we have, what is it, sixty and ninety days once we start this thing?
Hmm?
It's up to you guys.
So, so do we want to move to continue this public meeting, that this, this public hearing?
Or do, or do we, yeah.
Until the next meeting, when they present drawings that address all of the items from the letters that were presented?
Or do we want to simply take those as conditions?
Because we just closed the public hearing, and we, if we wanna continue this and review it a- again at the next meeting, then-
We have to reopen.
We need to reopen the, the public hearing.
We've voted on other projects like Tobin Ave without, with contingencies, without seeing-
Yeah, I think, I think this can be done with contingencies, just fine, uh, but we need to make sure we know what those contingencies are, and I think that we have to, this is, this is one where obviously we need a, a written-up, a written-up plan, this is complex enough that, uh, we can't just, you know, bless it and be done.
I'll deliver you a decision, you don't need to-
Perfect.
You don't need to-
Yeah, you'll, you'll do the decision, uh, and let's go through the things that we need contingencies on.
You got the list of-
I got it.
Well, I mean, there's a whole lot of letters with a lot of contingencies.
Snow storage. And the, and the, uh, drive-through, the, the high-volume drive-through.
Okay. Is that, is that a doable contingent, and let, let's be sure exactly what that means.
All right, for the snow storage?
Yeah, and we understand that.
When it snows, you haul the snow out.
Right.
On the drive-through thing, if it's gonna be a Dunkin' Donuts-
How do you control that?
Honeydew Donuts, Starbucks, any high-volume-
How do you control that, in this group?
You can redesign it once it's done.
Yeah. How do we control that? I mean, if, if we're approving the drive-through, and if we're gonna approve that, and they've got, how many cars, they have fifteen cars queued, I mean, so what if someone goes in and requires a, I mean, are we gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna choose between two companies?
Well, no, but they, they can come back for a site plan review, and at that time, you could say to them, all right, put your second curb cut out there, and put your drive-through coming in off of Drumhill Road.
Okay.
So do you simply wanna limit, limit this to, to, uh, a restriction that the fast-food restaurant cannot be used for a coffee or doughnut shop? I mean, is that what you're asking?
That's, that's going a little, let me ask-
I think you can't discriminate.
That's right.
Well, that's what I, why I'm asking that question.
Let me ask Evan what he might suggest here. Do you have some thoughts?
Well, I would suggest you, you let staff draft it, rather than-
Yes.
-the wordsmith it tonight.
Exactly.
What's on the table by the applicant is Dunkin' Donuts, and all, restricting or excluding Dunkin' Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts only. So if you go beyond that-
Okay.
You, you, you're making a lot of assumptions.
Yeah, I, I, I believe that's correct, I, I share that view.
I think the wording saying high volume kind of addresses it.
Problem with high volume is Starbucks isn't high volume.
Right.
Yes, he's using the worst case scenario.
But if you look at it, and you see, you got-
There is, other than Dunkin' Donuts, I'm not sure there is a high volume-
Yeah.
-fast-food drive-through.
Yeah.
And that's still a pretty deep, uh, line there, you got fifteen cars there before you even touch anything.
Fifteen is pretty long.
Yeah, it's, it seems to me-
Yeah, I think, I, I think it's adequate, um-
It could be a bank, and it may end up being a bank.
Yeah, could well, could well be.
TD Bank.
All right.
I'll, I'll drop something up and deliver it to you next meeting for deliberation.
But let's take one more shot at just explicitly stating what we think the conditions need to be, without writing them.
Okay.
And you got the snow, uh, and there were the modifications required for the, uh, drainage system, which I think have already been agreed to, but that may need to be.
What do you think about Hank's idea with the, uh, we got a wall there already on the right-hand side?
Yeah.
It's just a chain link fence now, but I was talking, um, Christina, how about grass pavers? That way, if a truck has to inch over on the side-
It can be done. Is that reasonable enough for you?
That's reasonable, we'll just have to remove the shrubs, that's all. The public hearing is closed. It'll be green still.
Yeah.
It'll, it'll, there won't be able to be shrubs.
I mean, keep in mind, the C I O D, one of the goals of it is to increase green areas.
I just, well-
Is to increase landscaping and increase the quality of it.
You could still do that, you could just design it differently, you know, have-
You only have so much space, but I, I see the point, and, and clearly there are enough restrictions on width on this site, it's tight enough that a couple of things probably have to give, I personally am rather more attached to the greenage on the front than the greenage on the side, and, and-
And I would rather see that, that island peninsula thing cut back such that you have the full twenty feet of use for the, for a fire truck, because if you have a fire truck coming through, you don't have a lot of cars queued up in that line taking up the space. And this pa- bypass lane and the queuing lane doesn't have a separator between it, so, I mean, that's really a twenty-foot road through there, not a ten-foot road, or twenty-nine foot road or something, twenty, twenty-foot road.
As long as you don't have somebody queued up in it.
Okay, so what, what you're, what you're suggesting is you move the islands in just a little bit, so that the, the width of the entrance into that, into those two lane spaces is a little bit wider.
Nancy, even out in the back there where the la- where the landscaping is, that's only ten feet, right?
Out back where the landscaping is, yeah, that's currently only ten feet, and that's the place I'm saying to cut that back in, so that you have more space, because once the, the cars are not in queue-
Yeah.
Those roadways on the two sides are not all that tight.
Well, yeah, but it's time of year to go around plow snow, what do you end up with?
But we already said they're gonna remove all the snow from the site.
I know.
So you got twenty feet between the building-
Twenty-nine feet.
We have twenty-nine between the building.
Oh, you got twenty feet between the building and the inside edge of that landscape there.
Right.
She was talking about this up there.
No, no, but right here, so you take a car and put it in there, and the car's gonna be two feet off the building, they're not gonna be driving against the building, then add eight feet for a car.
Mm-mm.
There's ten feet, so you only got a ten-foot wide driveway to get through there.
No, you have twenty feet between the-
Where the window is.
Landscape buffer and the landscape buffer, so it's not, there's twenty-nine feet between the building and the, the, uh, border of the property.
Twenty-six feet.
I'm seeing twenty-nine on mine.
I think you guys are looking at the two sides.
Oh, okay, I'm looking at the other side, all right.
Oh, okay.
All right, I was looking at the right side, you're looking at the left side, so sorry.
But it's the same, it'll be the same thing on the left.
It's, it's the twenty feet.
You got twenty feet to take out ten feet for the car, because they're not gonna park right, drive right against the edge of the building, you're gonna stay off a little bit.
Right.
And a car's probably eight feet wide by the time you get, the outside of mirrors and, so there's ten feet, and now you got a, a ten-foot wide road.
Go ahead, Katie's got something here, I think we should probably-
To run a fire truck through there at thirty miles an hour, you guys are good, you ought to be able to handle it.
Why, why would you be running a fire truck through the ten feet as opposed to the twenty feet?
Have you ever seen when the alarms go off and the truck shows up, they really don't, they go, they go, they're just going.
They go where they wanna go, and they're not gonna, they're not gonna follow the loop around the building, they're gonna pull in, you're not going to, they're right, they're gonna pull in. However they wanna pull in.
No, well, the question I'm asking, guys, is, is why would I expect that those cars are gonna stay in queue if there's a fire truck pulling in?
Because you get, you, you're bumper to bumper, and you're sitting there, where are you gonna go? Up?
They won't know till they show up.
They won't know, they'll, they'll have to deal with it when they show up.
Katie, do you have any suggestions on that, to make it a little bit wider?
Close the public hearing, guys.
Close the public hearing.
If you can give points of information as to what-
Yeah, that's it, that's as far as we can go.
Mr. Chair, if you wanna have a back and forth, I would suggest you reopen the public-
Well, understood, yeah.
That's all, I'm, I don't need to, I already got answers.
Are you guys done? I mean, are we, uh?
Well, I just wanna innovate, reiterate, the reason I wanted more than twenty is, when you remove the snow, that's after hours operation, you're not gonna get a backhoe and a front-end loader during the operation, or the, you know, hours of the building. So if I'm in there plowing, and I'm pushing it to the right, that lane's gonna go from twenty to probably seventeen, that's, and, and then if there's an incident, now you can't move, that's, you know, at the end of the day, you're gonna clear it, but during the operation hours, you can only move it around.
Just, the twenty feet's no different than what's behind, um-
Yeah.
One-Ten Grill, Chelmsford Street.
Mm-hmm.
That's been in operation for eight years, there's never been one incident that I'm aware of.
Yeah, that's, that's-
The, the snow gets removed, the cars go around through the bank, the fire trucks drive around the building, the trash gets picked up.
Yeah, but you go there doing-
There's never been an issue.
Right after a storm, there's no parking.
But even with the, being, being no parking, the fire truck gets around the building, the trash gets picked up, the cars go through the bank, the bank drive-through, the employees get to their jobs, the customers get into the building, it all works.
Yeah.
And if it doesn't work, then the customers complain, and the property owners fix it.
Yeah. I tend to agree with you. Yes, Nancy?
Yeah, the real problem I'm having with this conversation is the question of, do we accept the competency of the department heads-
Yeah.
-to ident- adequately identify the issues that they need to have taken care of, or do we not respect their competency and believe that we need to second-guess them? And, I mean, for all the world, I'm not gonna sit here and tell Christina that the drainage plan's wrong, and that we need a different drainage plan, and I don't think it's our place to sit here and say that the fire chief made a mistake on this.
Okay.
And that's just my-
Well, I disagree with you with that, because the way that, the way that the fire department is doing it with, with their, uh, you know, their radius, they're probably, I don't know if they're factoring in, you know, Henry's snow, he actually moves snow, so he knows that there's gonna be three feet there during the hours. We're not talking about all the time, sure, they'll be able to move it after, so that's some of the points. And honestly, I drive a fire truck at times, so I can tell you firsthand that I actually don't believe that radius thing at times, 'cause I've done it.
Then, then, then what you're saying is, we can't trust-
That's not what we're saying.
The department, the fire department's opinion on plans.
Not what we're saying, see, you, that's not what we're saying.
Because the parameters that they're using to make those decisions aren't good enough.
No, it's not what we're saying, we're giving our opinion, which is what we're supposed to do, our opinion, that's what we're gonna do.
I think there's an easy solution to this, they don't have a tenant already for the drive-through, just eliminate the drive-through, and it fixes the whole thing.
I think, I think that's clearly, that's clearly an important part of this project from an economic point of view.
For them to lease it out, I think they need it.
Okay, um, well, all right, there's some, there's some concern there, but I am inclined to agree with several other members of the board that the departments have spoken, they have given us their opinions, and that we should, uh, we should go with those and trust them, unless we think they have made a very clear mistake of fact, and I don't see a mistake of fact here.
In which case, we should go back and discuss it with the departments.
Yeah, in which case, it needs to go back and get to discuss it with the department.
I just wanna point out to Timmy's point again, being on the fire department over thirty years, the right-hand side of that island in the front is a hydrant there, and it's also a snow storage area, so that doesn't make sense, it's a regular, very-
Well, the snow storage is gone.
I know that, but-
But it wasn't when this was right.
So, you know, they're all human, they can make mistakes like we can, so-
Yeah, that's true.
Don't take their stuff to gospel.
Just a point of information, though, this is based off the old plan, so it's not subject to the fire department's commonship, so the revised plan set that you'll have for the decision will actually have that removed.
Yes, precisely.
So that, that didn't reflect in their level?
That's right.
Okay, yeah, so they, they saw something slightly different.
Could we reopen the, the public, uh, review?
For what, for the purpose of-
Continue this, and continue this, uh, plan review until the next meeting, and at that point in time, review updated drawings that address all of the department, uh, all of the issues that the various departments had, and go through the department letters and check off where, where in the drawings those issues have been addressed.
Okay, I'm perfectly okay with that. I don't even know if- I mean, how, how far out is that? That's another two weeks? That's right, February's a short month.
Twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Twenty-seventh, okay.
We could do anything to the 27th, even if we got it done tonight, but it's still at the wait for review.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have Evan work up the letters?
Yep, yeah, Evan, if you can prepare the, prepare the decision material, we can review it at that point.
Do you want to make a motion to reopen the hearing?
Yes, why don't we do that? Why don't we?
Give you a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Second? I got a motion second in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll do that. We got to, got you to the 27th, um, and, uh, and I think rather than take, there's no public, hasn't been any public input anyway, but rather than take anymore at this point, it makes far more sense if we're, uh, when we take some more to take it based on the updated drawings.
Well, that way too, Mr. Chair, they could, if you wanted to entertain some changes of what's a grass berm or paver, is it possible to discuss about that?
Sidewalk, sidewalk, bike rack.
Sidewalk, bike rack, those things.
But then we could actually have a discussion about it.
Okay. Yeah, right, we have to, we would have to reopen in any case. Very good, okay, if, if you guys can do that? Thanks. Yeah, all right, we'll see you on the 27th. Thank you. Okay.
Yep.
Next one up, and I believe I see them in the back of the room now, is 59 to 65 Princeton. And this is also a slight plant, site plan review. This will also entail some public hearing. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Douglas Hauser from Lampard Hauser and Robyn representing the applicant. Someone who hasn't been busy tonight, Katie Enright is helping us as the project engineer. And Katie will give us more of the details and, of this particular site plan. You can see, it's 59 to 65 Princeton Street. Two existing apartment buildings with 19 existing units are there. The proposal is to add one additional building containing 18 units.
Thank you.
They're in the RC District. The plan shows that we are compliant, uh, with all of the dimensional requirements, including, uh, parking as well. And then if we go to, um, the floor area ratio, that required a variance, which we obtained a couple of months ago, and that's brought us here. This was a controversial project initially, when this was brought before this board about a year or so ago. Since that time, we have completely revamped the program. So what have we done is, first and foremost, we met with the Vinyl Square North Chelmsford Community Group on no less than three and maybe four occasions, and we obtained their input, and it's particularly the abutters, and it's particularly those to the north of the project, um, and to the, to the west, which is Mr. Vines who's here, and several of the abutters, I believe, are here tonight who are direct abutters to the existing buildings on the north. And we listened to their input, and they had a couple of very, very good suggestions that we've incorporated into these plans. As you can see, this, a significant amount of increased landscaping. The most important piece, I think, of this, there are two critical pieces. The first is that the existing buildings are at best in need of repair.
Yeah.
And we have already agreed before the zoning board of appeals, and we've said this to the abutters, and we're saying it to you, and expect this to be a condition of approval, if, if so granted, that before we receive an occupancy permit for a third building, that there will be a list of improvements specifically in the decision of what has to be done to the existing buildings and what the order will be, and that those items are completed, not underway, but completed, so that the neighbors will have the assurances that were made to them, that there are clear improvements to the property, both externally and some of them are internal, but mostly external. Katie will describe for you, I think, most particularly what I call the, the rear of the existing buildings that go to the abutters and the changes that are going to be proposed, significant improvements in the landscaping of that area, the maintenance of that area. Couple of other critical points that we tried to address, and I'm sure Mr. Vines will bring this up. Mr. Vines is located. This is a paper street in this portion, Newfield Street, and Mr. Vines is here, and Mr. Tassi is here. These gentlemen have rights halfway to the midpoint of the paper street. We're all in agreement, everybody that's along here is in agreement to have, request the town to abandon the paper street prior to the issuance of an occupancy building permit. So, not beforehand, because we've got to make sure we get everything done. We're not going to abandon rights yet, but before we can use the property for the new building here, that this would be abandoned. And that's critical to Mr. Vines. He's made that clear to me no less than a dozen times, and we've said that to him, but I want to make sure it's a condition of your approvals if granted. And Mr. Tassi is here, I believe, and he, I think, is 100% behind that approach as well. We have a proposed playground. Nothing is there presently. There are a number of children that live in the existing buildings. This is going to be geared towards younger children because, uh, the park is relatively close by, that the older kids can actually get to the park. But this is better for the, you know, the young kids, the three to four or five-year-olds. That, you know, a closed-in area that is well-maintained will get them away from playing in this existing parking lot, which is not striped, and it's a complete open bed, quite frankly. This will be 1,000% safer. When we, I think the original plan that you had before you had the building shifted this way, and
It did.
The proposed playground or some other space down here. That switch was made as a result of conversations with the Gillette family at the Mills, trying to accommodate what they preferred to see happen, and they preferred that the building shift eastward and the playground go to the west, which we've done to accommodate their request. Continuing on, we hid all the parking. There was a comment in one of the letters from the Board of Health, which I, I don't necessarily agree with, so I put that right out there. They're saying, there's shown on the plan, you know, two dumpsters, I believe, currently, and they're saying, if you add 18 units, it's not going to be enough, so they want us to have more dumpsters. I don't think you need to have more dumpsters, you just have more frequent pickup. It's private pickup. It's not town pickup. So, we don't need to take an area that's already kind of tight and make it more congested with more dumpsters, so that it's only picked up once or twice a week. If it needs to be picked up three or four times a week, then it has to be, but it doesn't mean you add the numbers. I respectfully disagree with that conclusion. Why don't I sit down for a second and let Katie go through all the details of the engineering of the site, um, and more particularly, the significant improvements that are being proposed to the rear. With respect to the new building, it's 18 units, not 15, but 18 units, and they're broken up as to how many are two bedrooms. I think it's 15 two bedrooms and three one bedrooms. I believe that the design of the building that we've shown previously, you'll be satisfied with. This is a project that, this has to go hand in hand. There can't be improvements to those other two buildings. And we can't get the financing for, to make those repairs really, absent getting this new building, and that's going to be built in part of the budget to make the new building feasible, will be a budget to address the concerns of the other two buildings that have barely needed a repair. Katie?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Katie Enright with Howard Stein Hudson. Doug already brought you through a little bit, but I want to bring you kind of back to the existing site, so you can see an overview of what, what we have there today. So you can start to see the condominiums in the mill to the south there. You can see there's a, there's a, was an affordable housing development here on Princeton, um, to the right, and there's a multifamily home also to, to the right of the two existing buildings. And then essentially, to the rear of us, there's, there's mostly single-family buildings with a few two-family buildings, I think, mixed in, um, to the north of the property. You can see today, and if you've had a chance to drive back there and take a look, um, once you get to the back and you see the two Princeton Drive buildings, um, they're, they're two two-and-a-half story buildings, there's three levels of, of living in the, in there. It's 19 units. Um, the existing buildings are split up as 11 two beds and eight one beds. The front of the buildings, the buildings themselves are pretty tired. Um, they've had the roof replaced, I believe, recently, but that's about it on the exterior. You can see there's a mass of paving out in front of the buildings with no striping. Essentially, people park in the middle, which is a little strange, so they go around the outside and have one line of cars parked down the middle of the paved area, and the dumpsters are just sitting off to the edge of the pavement, um, on the top of the hillside to the south of the existing parking lot. There's also pavement that runs behind the buildings, which is believed to have been accessed to the poles back there, and there's pavement between the two buildings. Um, and on the many occasions that I've been out there, um, the children that live there unfortunately are essentially playing in the paved areas in the parking lot and off to the side of the parking lot and some of the kind of degraded lawn areas to the side. So when we looked at this project, we looked at the project as a whole, um, and pretty much reinvented, um, what's happening there and created this plan. In creating this plan, we're essentially at, the back of this sidewalk here is at the existing edge of pavement, and the existing edge of pavement is here. So we're essentially adding the building to the south side of the existing development and adding two areas of pavement on either side to the north and to the south, and what that does is it provides a turning radius for our fire truck. So we're able to get the ladder truck in there, back up and turn out. Where currently, they're not able to do that. And that turning radius with the Chelmsford ladder truck has been submitted to your fire prevention office and approved also as part of this project. We've also added some additional parking at the end of the building there, um, and a small parking lot on the southwest side of the playground to add the additional spaces necessary, so that we meet zoning with 76 spaces for the entire site, and that's based on, um, the number of, the number of parking spaces we're required to have for this amount of units on the site. We're in a residency zoning district, although we're adjacent to a CD commercial, general commercial district, which actually wraps to the front and to the south of us. You can see the zoning line kind of runs through the beginning of the site here. This is the zone line here. And with that, with the residency zoning district, we're, we're not technically allowed to do multifamily, so what we had asked for is an existing, um, an expansion to an existing non-conforming use, since these buildings have been here for so long. As part of that, we're proposing buildings that meet within the zoning requirements for setbacks. We meet all setbacks. We meet building coverage. We meet parking. Um, we do not meet the floor area ratio, which we had been to the zoning board prior to this, to talk to them regarding the floor area ratio. We've also, as, as Doug mentioned, we've proposed, proposed a playground area that's enclosed between the parking lot and the building on the south side, and that's to, to take those children that are currently playing in the parking lot and give them a safe place to play as part of this development. Certainly with only two and one bedroom apartments, there's a limited amount of children, but it's, it's obvious when you're there that children are using the parking lot to play. The new, all of this pavement is now going to be new, so we're curbing all of it and we're draining all of it. So currently, the pavement just slopes off to both Mr. Vines' property to the west and to the Gillette property and the Mill property to the south. There's no curbing, there's no striping, there's no drainage whatsoever. It rains, it flows, and it sheets off to everywhere. As part of this development, we're curbing all of this area. It's entirely new pavement. We're putting in a complete drainage design to meet stormwater management, so we're providing catch basins, um, separators to infiltration under the parking lot to capture, treat, and reduce runoff from the pre-to-post development on all sides of the site. We're also proposing, um, new utilities to come in. I think when you read the North Chelmsford Water Letter, you'll see that they've asked us to loop the water from the 12-inch water main that's in Newfield and bring it to the 4-inch that comes in Princeton Drive, um, and provide the new building with separate services for both domestic and fire protection, and this new building would be sprinkled. There is a retaining wall around that southwestern parking lot to hold up the parking lot where it kind of goes off the hillside there currently. The highest point is 12 feet at that corner next to the dumpsters, um, and then it's reduced as you come around to the sides, and there's a very small retaining wall that holds up the walkway to the back entrances of the, the new building. Um, that's held up by a less than, it's, it's about two feet high in some areas, and that's only been put in so that we can keep as many trees as possible between us and the southern abutter. And that walkway wraps around the rear of the building and connects into the front, the front area. The building in this, in this area is allowed to be 35 feet tall. Um, what we've done is we've provided calculations to the building inspector to make sure we meet that, so we've been able to drop the grade to the rear of the building as much as possible to keep it into the hillside as much as possible to meet those requirements for height. Three stories allowed in this, in this district, and there's three stories, the, the, the building on both sides of Princeton Drive, all of those buildings are three stories, and also the Mills to the south of us are three stories, and most of the residences to the north of us have a third story in the roof line, um, if you were to drive down that street also. So we're looking at a three-story building with the height, um, also meeting the requirements. Again, the new building's going to have 15 two bedrooms and three one bedrooms. Existing building upgrades, as Doug said, are pretty significant. These are the existing buildings that have been drawn over. Um, essentially, the entire exterior is going to be redone, so all new siding, all new, um, gutters, all new cement board panels, all new cement board siding, all new door and window trim, new granite steps and risers, stone veneer on the wall. The wall out there is in pretty bad shape, and it's a concrete wall, and it's really unattractive, so they're going to fix portions of the wall. There's new portions of the wall, and they're going to stone veneer that wall, and that all wraps in nicely with the new building, which I'll show you in a second. Um, in the, in the rear, they're going to do all the same, um, and change out all the composite, change out all the decks and railings with composite and stain any leftover wood that's in the rear of the building. So you can see, there's significant view shed upgrades to what's happening at the rear of these buildings that faces the residential abutters to the north of us, um, and certainly, there's also been significant upgrades to the front of the building that would face the new building. And this all ties into the new building. This is the front and the back, so you can see the three stories at the front. That, again, also has the same type of cement board siding, composite decks, dome veneers, slate imitation shingles. So again, we're kind of tying the development together, cleaning up all the exterior of this, of this development, um, and proposing a handsome new building that conforms and looks, looks well with the other buildings that are on the subject site. To go back to landscaping and lighting, this is a pretty significant upgrade too, to the landscaping that happens there today. So we heard a lot of issues about the view shed to the backs of these buildings. They're pretty awfully kept right now. So, in addition to redoing the rears of the buildings, essentially, we're proposing this planting strip also at the rear of the building, so we're, we're showing, um, a significant amount of junipers along that back property line. Those are nice because they grow pretty high. They can grow 15 to 20 feet, but they only are about three to five feet in width. They're very columnar, so the poles that do exist on this site, which I misspoke at the last time, and I've provided a 10-foot driveway back to those poles, even though there's no easement on record, so they can get there. Those trees have all been put in along that back property line to help and aid the view shed of all of those abutters who are higher than us on that back side, um, and also some giant green arborvitae's too, which will grow, and not interfere with both the overhead wires and provide some good screening, um, to the neighbors. In all, we've provided 10 new trees, 51 evergreens, and 170 shrubs, so I think if you drove out there today and saw the nothing that exists there today as far as plantings, um, this is a pretty significant upgrade. Again, we're also providing some screening to our residential abutters out on either sides of Princeton Drive, and also, we're filling in, um, some of the understory, um, on the southern side there, although we're significantly higher than the Mill complex below us. We're trying to provide both a handsome view shed for the building on the back and also providing significant planting to hide, um, that view shed as much as possible along the back. Again, we're also providing, we're using our half of Newfield, um, to essentially provide a, a pretty dense screen along Mr. Vines' property also, which will help his issue with not only drainage, between the curbing and the drainage upgrades and the additional plantings, but will also help keep people from moseying into his backyard and using it as their backyard. So hopefully, that will help that also. Lighting, we're proposing, um, five poles and three wall packs on the new building. The poles are, um, sorry, five poles, five poles, 15 feet height, um, in the new parking area. Um, there's existing light poles in front of the existing buildings that are going to be replaced in kind. There's three new pole, or five new poles, and three wall packs on the back of the building, just where those entrances come out of the back of the building, so people can see along that walkway. And those lights, again, would meet the, the requirements or the policies of, of the planning board. Again, we've read through, we've been able to talk to Bruce Harper at North Chelmsford Water about the water, um, changes that he would like to see for the plan. We've talked to, um, Dan Kay at Fire Prevention about the fire turning radius, um, and we've been in touch with Christina Papadopoulos about, um, the review of, um, the drainage and the engineering on the site. Um, not sure if there were other letters. Besides, oh, the Board of Health had, had suggested a significant amount of more dumpsters, but I know the Town of Chelmsford recently changed the policy to say that apartments are essentially private pickup now, so we'd like to not have triple the amount of dumpsters we're showing on this plan, um, but certainly, we'll work with, with this board and in the purview of this board to, to do what's necessary to make sure that there's not a trash issue at the site. With that, I think I've
I got letters. One other condition, somewhat condition. When we met with the neighborhood, one of the concerns was that there had been a lack of communication for the last several decades with the prior owners, and what we said is while we can't ask that or make it mandatory, we would, like language put into the permit, if so granted, or the plan or the decision, that says, that would encourage the owner of the project here, the development, to have a meeting once a year with the abutters to make sure that any of their issues are being at least understood and heard. Not that they have to be implemented, but at least they'll be communicated in that, the goal is to get more effective communication and keep the neighborhood happy, and we're happy to do that.
Gotcha.
So we've really worked quite hard with the neighborhood to get to this point, and our client has really been very amenable to making dramatic improvements, and we hope the board accepts those things and, and gives us the conditions that we need for an approval. We'll leave it to you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Um, you know, obviously, we've seen this before and, and it's earlier, uh, in its, in its earlier forms and as it was developing. I guess we run it around, uh,
Letters.
Oh, you have letters? Good.
Yep.
Fire away.
North Chelmsford Water Department, the water district has reviewed the applicant's proposal to construct a new 18-unit apartment building at 5965 Princeton Street, North Chelmsford. The North Chelmsford Water District will supply water with the full understanding that the applicant shall follow the rules and regulations of the North Chelmsford Water District and the Chelmsford Fire Department's requirements and agree to the following conditions. One, the apartment building will have a 4-inch domestic water service and a compound water meter with a brass strainer, and will have a separate 6-inch fire protection service. Each water service shall be protected with the State of Massachusetts-approved backflow preventer device. Two, each unit will be charged a domestic entrance fee for each unit, 18 in total, and a fire entrance fee for the square footage of the building for the fire sprinkler service. Three, the two existing two-story multi-dwellings, 9 and 9A Princeton Drive, will be retapped and tied straight into the eight, new 8-inch CLDI water main after the testing, chlorination and water sampling is satisfied. Four, the new 8-inch water main will be looped from the 12-inch water main located on Newfield Street through Princeton Drive and tied into the existing 4-inch cast-iron water main and connected with a new 8-by-4-inch reducer and gate valve to eliminate the existing dead-ended water main. The applicant shall give the North Chelmsford Water District a water utility easement from Princeton Street to the existing easement on Newfield Street. Five, all materials, inspections, overhead, entrance fees, tap-in of domestic and fire service, et cetera, will be coordinated through the North Chelmsford Water District. Bruce J. Harper, Sr. Chelmsford Fire Department, dear members of the board, the water supply appears to be adequate. The required pressure and flow shall be confirmed by a current water The required pressure and flow shall be confirmed by a current water flow test performed approximately to the site with all calculations submitted to this department for review and approval. Hydrant locations shown on this plan are adequate. The Chemsford Fire Department requires a hydrant within sixty feet of the fire department connection and a hydrant within five hundred feet for manual firefighting operations. Hydrants and fire protection equipment shall be free from landscape and obstructions. Access for firefighting apparatus and emergency vehicles shown on the plan received and dated January seventh, two thousand nineteen from Katie Enright of Howard Stein Hudson is adequate. This department requests that fire lane pavement markings and signage be added on western edge of the driveway as fire apparatus will require this space to adequately turn around. Fire apparatus access shall be designed by a registered engineer to withstand the weight of fire apparatus. Snow storage shall not obstruct or impede fire access roads or turnaround. All exits shall have sidewalks to allow a continuous path from the exit that lead to a public way. The dumpster location shown on this plan is adequate. An automatic sprinkler system conforming to NFPA thirteen and a fire alarm system conforming to NFPA seventy-two shall be required. Both systems shall be monitored by UL-approved Central Station Monitor and Service. And all components and fire protection systems must comply with the state building code and the Chemsford Fire Department requirements. Three sets of sprinkler and fire alarm plans along with support and documentation must be submitted to the Fire Prevention Office for review prior to the approval of building plans. All equipment related to fire safety shall be located at the discretion of the Chemsford Fire Department. The applicant is advised that testing for emergency radio responder communication and if necessary, installation of, of bi-directional amplifier system shall be required. The applicant must submit an application to the Town of Chemsford E911 Committee for address and unit number and through its coordinator, the town clerk. This office would approve this plan with these conditions and I ask the board to make this letter part of the approval process. Respectfully submitted, Daniel J. Katsoufis. Police Department has no comments. Board of Health, see attached letter. To Planning Board of Appeals, I've reviewed the plans for the proposed new multifamily dwelling at fifty-nine sixty-five Princeton Street. The plan shows an area for two dumpsters at the rear of the building. I believe that these are current dumpsters on the property for the existing two buildings. These dumpsters, dumpsters are not currently enclosed and must be enclosed per the regulation. Two dumpsters for three buildings and a total of thirty-four units is not adequate number for proper trash disposal and recycling. The Board of Health would request at least two to three dumpsters be placed at the rear area of the existing two buildings in addition to the two dumpsters already on the property. As stated above, these additional dumpsters must be enclosed per regulation. Respectfully, Sue Rosa. Town Engineer. Dear members, this office has reviewed the site plans by Howard Stein Hudson, consisting of nine sheets dated January seventh, two thousand nineteen and a supplemental data report dated January two thousand nineteen. As a result of this review, this office has the following comments. One, this department shall be notified when work on-site is to commence in order to arrange for inspections. Two, any revisions to the drainage system shall be submitted and approved by this office. Three, the stormwater operation and maintenance plan shall be followed as described in the report. Copies of any inspections or other reports done in accordance with this plan shall be forwarded to the engineering office. Four, a site as built shall be provided upon completion of the work on-site. As-built to include a letter from the engineering stating that all stormwater devices have been built to satisfy mass stormwater standards. Provide all support and documents and calculations. The as-built shall be from a ground survey and submitted in AutoCAD and paper form. Five, confirmatory testing shall be performed in the area of the infiltration per stormwater management guidelines. Testing shall be witnessed by the Chemsford DPW Engineering Division. All unsuitable material, if any, discovered in the excavation for the infiltration system shall be removed and disposed of in accordance with state and local regulations. Six, this project requires MPDES construction general permit. Final copy of the stormwater pollution prevention plan, SWPPP, must be submitted to the town as well as filed with EPA prior to beginning any site work. Seven, the proposed sewer work will require permitting and applicable fees from the DPW Sewer Division for connection to the municipal sewer system. Eight, trench permits shall be filed as necessary per five-twenty CMR fourteen, Chapter eighty-two eight. Nine, the design engineer has received the design and draft and review comments from this office. If you have any questions, please contact this office. Christina Papadopoulos, Town Engineer.
That's it. Hey, thanks. Okay, let's see, let us, as we did before, go around once, then open this up and I guess we'll start at this end of the table.
Okay. Yeah, I've got a few questions. Katie, are the existing buildings sprinkled?
No, they're not.
Are they going to be?
They're not. It is way too costly and the gentleman that owns the buildings is gonna keep the, basically the improvements to a place where that can't, that's not gonna be able to happen. If that was included in the project, it wouldn't be economic.
Are there, with the, the improvements that are being made on the buildings, are there energy efficiency improvements being made, windows or whatever?
I'm not sure. Kay, Kay is here. Yeah, can you speak to that, Kay, please? This is Kay Ning, the owner.
Yes, Kay Ning is ten South Meadow Drive in Sudbury. So regarding the energy efficiencies, we have done some window replacement and also the, we add insulation in attic. So we did something that we could without really interfering with people live there.
So how, what percentage of the windows have already been replaced?
I mean, I, I can't remember exactly. We've done it over the years.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to say, but you know, if they need to be replaced, we will replace them, to put that way.
All right, Katie, questions? What's in the basement?
In the basement of the new building?
In the basement of the new building.
So there's just four hundred square feet of utility space. So it's just utility, it's a just utility room.
So if we put a requirement on that, that there will be no living units in the basement?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Because I would expect that that requirement...
And also, the floor area ratio would go up if we used, if we had a usable basement area.
Yeah, we had problems in other places.
Yeah, no, there's only gonna be one small room built and it's essentially for the utilities.
All right. Laundry room, something, not...
It's a, yeah, it's whatever we can do. I think we literally have four hundred square feet that we can do within the FAR we have.
I don't care as long as it's not a living unit.
Yes, yes, no.
Bicycle rack?
Man, seriously, I didn't do it here either, did I? Yeah, no. Yes, there'll be a bike rack, yep.
All right. I, I have a question for landscaping. I know we don't have Lorraine here tonight, but if you could come back with an answer. The arborvitae's in the back of the existing buildings.
There's only one.
Only one arborvitae?
Right, the rest of them are junipers.
So this here is a, is an arborvitae, but these are all junipers. So those are low, they're not, they're not gonna go straight up.
They are gonna go up.
They are gonna go up.
Yep.
So those are...
And that's, that's the point, is to kinda go straight up and be, but be narrow. So those are, they're, those are Emerald Sentinel junipers and the height will go to fifteen to twenty feet, but they'll only be three to five feet width. And so it's to keep them out of the way of the overhead wires and provide screening at the same time. And then there's a giant, there's one giant green arborvitae, or there's a few of them spaced per out, but there's one over there and those get a little bit wider and that's why it's over there, is to get it away from the wires.
So I guess my question for Lorraine is, I'd just send feedback from her on the particular type of junipers that she's specking. Are they subject to snow damage? Because some of them are and I know that this property is cost-sensitive enough that if these junipers were substantially damaged by the snow, they probably couldn't be replaced.
I think it's usually a requirement that they're, that they are replaced though, is it not?
Yeah.
Of the planning board.
Yeah, if they die, but the problem with...
Right. Oh, if they get hurt, yeah.
Yeah, you know...
Yep, I will definitely, that's...
You know what happens to these things.
Something that she will know more than me, so I will definitely ask her.
She can speak to it better than you can.
Yep.
Fences on the, I'm gonna say northwest, southwest sides along the periphery, are you planning to put some in there to basically contain, contain kids from the neighbors' properties?
No, the, the neighbors to the north are pretty significantly uphill and there's actually a retaining wall already. This is a pretty significant retaining wall here. And then this goes straight uphill to the top. And then most of the neighbors, I believe, if not, most if not all have fences already on their side.
What about over...
On the new side, Newfield...
On here, um...
The new, Newfield side.
Well, we could ask Mr. Vines, but we had proposed just all landscaping along that side and none of that. Has the ZB... Oh, another question for Katie. How often are the existing dumpsters emptied? I don't know.
Once a week.
And we're basically doubling the amount of units here, more or less.
Right, so they could certainly come twice a week or we could look to, to shift a tree back and add an additional dumpster.
I think I would rather see three times a week for pickup and keep your rodent population down and keep your kids out of it.
Did that fully conform with the...
Yeah. I mean, it basically just keeps the, keeps the volume down.
Question in my head now, just like we just talked about not doing.
And the last question I have is for Evan. Has the ZBA approved the expansion of the non-conformance for multifamily?
That's your jurisdiction. The zoning board approved the variance for the FAR.
Okay, all right, so we're, we're the ones that have to approve the expansion of the non, non-conforming use. But they approved the...
The FAR.
FAR, okay. That's the end of my questions.
Mike? I only had the question that Don had, that she just took on the ZBA question, that 'cause it's RC and we're approving a multifamily in RC.
Yeah.
Well, I hate to go against Sue Rosa, but I also, 'cause she's a department head and she wrote that you should get another dumpster, but I would like to agree with, that it should be picked up more often. I would hate to see four dumpsters there and, when you could just pick them up more frequently. You know, I, I wish it was only two stories to match the others, but I can see where you're at and why you have to do it. I do, is there, and my other question, was there a sidewalk too going out? Is that where off the new development? Is that where, was, I don't remember seeing it when I was there.
There's, I don't believe that there's an existing sidewalk out to Princeton.
There isn't one, no.
No.
Okay. That's all I got for right now. Thanks, Tim. Don?
Attorney, question for Attorney Hauser. Are there any open issues that you have not addressed with the Butters? Seems like you've addressed a lot of them.
Oh, there is one that, and I only got asked about this right before I came in. I also got, Bill Vines is here. Bill asked me right before the meeting that on his portion of Newfield Street, there are, I think, five trees that he would like, that are very badly damaged, that he would like to have taken down, which we would agree to do because we're gonna wind up doing all that other work, it makes sense. So as long as it doesn't violate some bylaw of the town with the tree warden or, we're happy to do that. That was the other condition that the neighbors asked us about. And I believe I've given you the Newfield Street conditions and even the, what I call contingency of the, the meeting once a year with, with the neighbors. With respect to the Gillette family, we met with them on two occasions at least and they weren't either in favor or against. As I call it, they're Switzerland. They'll let the board do its job. That's what I was told directly by Gene and his son Stephen. Katie was with me at that meeting. So, you know, that's where they're at. And we've tried to address their concerns and one of the Butters that lived in one of the condo units, we had shifted the building down and switched with the playground. That addressed that concern at that point in time. Other than that, I think we've, I think we've hit everything.
Thanks.
All the questions I have?
The only thing that I got, I talked to you about that this morning on, on the Newfield Street thing with putting the contingency in there that that gets transferred...
It would, yes, so...
Prior to construction.
It's not prior to construction. I had that discussion again with Bill.
Okay, all right, you handled it.
I did. It would be that before we can get an occupancy certificate, because that, we'll have no value. We'll have invested, our client will invest millions of dollars with no value. But we have to get to that point, get, prepare for the occupancy certificate and at that point, we'll, we have all Butters on that portion of the street of Newfield agreeing, as far as I'm aware as of this moment, to agree to get that portion wiped out. Mr. Vines is here. Is Mr. Tassie here? He is.
As long as they're happy with it, I'm fine.
That's, that's a big part of it.
We've said that since day one when we met with him, we're being consistent.
Okay, that's all I got. You're up. I'm up.
You're up.
All right. So we found the electricity, it's coming in behind the buildings now?
It is.
All right. And the tenant, the people out that are up on the hill are not getting electricity from that, correct?
No, I know, no, not all of the existing conditions, it's only showing on coming to our building.
I, I know, I was there and looked at it. I knew the last time you weren't here and you told me I was wrong.
You're right a hundred percent of the time.
We're not all perfect like you, Henry.
Yeah. But we have an engineered plan, we're hoping that it's accurate. It would be a lot nicer if that, if those services were underground, you could really landscape that and get rid of all that stuff, but that's up to you guys to take and do. But there's no affordable units in these, like, if I'm...
That's correct, it's not an affordable project.
And I think that's something the board has to wrap their head around whether they wanna give them relief without affordable.
Well, let me address that directly right now, please.
I got a couple, I got a couple more questions.
Well, I wanted, I was gonna go one by one.
Go ahead.
That's, I, I don't think that's within the purview of the board with respect to establishing what should be affordable and not affordable. This is not a forty B. It's a private development, looking to make substantial onsite improvements that we just spent fifteen or twenty minutes outlining. And for this board to put other conditions on with respect to the economic ability for this project to function correctly, I don't think is appropriate for the board. We may disagree on that.
I, we can disagree on that, but I can also say it was brought up before when you first came, when it first was in front of us. It was mentioned.
It wasn't with me, I can assure you.
Whatever.
I, I know, I, I, I don't think that's within the board's purview. Respectfully, it's not a forty B.
All right, I understand. But you are looking for relief from us, right?
We're looking to expand a non-conforming existing multifamily lot. That's a hundred percent true.
Sounds reasonable.
And we're making substantial improvements. So it's, it's a quid pro quo. We can make all these improvements and then be having our hands tied on what we can charge for rents. Otherwise, something's gonna give.
Yep.
And I'd rather not give up on the landscaping or the improvements to the other two buildings.
This is the same argument we get with every one of them. We just, the only reason I look at is we're adding eighteen units to our stockpile in town. It, it is what it is, we can make our votes on it, figure it out. What was the other thing? Oh, the wall, that's down the bottom. That's not over fourteen feet high anywhere that we need a building permit like we have in the past, right? So that's...
It's just twelve.
Just twelve feet.
It's the highest, yeah.
So, and what do we have on top of that twelve-foot-high wall to keep it so people don't go over the top of it?
There's a fence.
There's a fence. And the building inspector is not gonna have an issue with the twelve-foot-high fence, the fence and the thing, 'cause now we're, we're getting closer to that fourteen-foot that we need a, another building...
I haven't asked him specifically about that, exactly.
I'm only saying this 'cause we've had this problem in the past, I just wanna make sure that's addressed.
We could definitely check.
We'd definitely check, thank you.
Yeah. 'Cause a twelve-foot fall is a pretty substantial...
Yes.
Get a big bump on that.
Yeah, and the dumpsters are pushing up next to it. And the existing drawing I see with the fourteen-foot wide was not correct. Is that what you, that's what we're saying, is it's twenty-two and a half feet?
The fourteen-foot wide was an old, it was a passageway that was shown on an old drawing, but since been updated. The pavement itself has always been twenty-two.
But you guys own the twenty-two feet.
There's an access easement over the twenty-two feet, correct.
And I think that was my question.
Okay, okay, thank you. Hank?
I got no questions.
Okay. Let's...
Let's see, I got a couple. First, on Newfield. It sounds as if at some point some town action is needed here. Is that correct?
To abandon the paper street.
To abandon the, uh, what would be the mechanism for that? Is that something that we have to get prepared for, for a town meeting?
I don't, I'm not sure if it requires town meeting action. I know it requires planning board action.
Right.
It may require a town meeting action. I'd have to look into that.
Can you, can you take a look and see? I mean, obviously it can be done and I don't, I wouldn't anticipate a big problem, but I wanna make sure that we, we get that right.
One question on that. If, if we're waiting on an occupancy permit on that road being abandoned and it goes to town meeting and they don't approve it...
Then what do we do?
We don't get an occupancy.
I can assure you that we're going to address that issue.
All right, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there in case nobody else caught it.
Oh, we, yeah.
That's why, that's why I get paid the big bucks.
Very good. Okay.
No, it's a legitimate question, a hundred percent legit. We, we wanna, we, Evan and I have talked about this in the past. We are gonna figure out the protocol of timing with respect to the abandonment.
Got you. Okay, the other thing I had on the dumpsters, uh, as I recall, the Board of Health actually asked for two things. One of them was fencing around the dumpsters.
That's already there.
That's already there, okay. Uh, the second one, I, I see their point on more dumpsters. On the other hand, multiple pickups seems to make a great deal of sense in this case and we could certainly write that in. You know, that some minimum number of pickups. If it's one now, I would think it would have to be at least two and, and additional is needed.
To answer that, my client has already said he would be willing to do three.
Okay. If we, if you, if you, if you are happy with us putting three in, I think that covers you.
It's better for the conditions of the property.
The other question I have on the dumpsters is, I mean, I'm not sure exactly what the mechanism is by which trash gets to the dumpsters. Is there a, are maintenance people that do it or individual owners have to do it?
Individual owners go out and throw their trash.
Yeah, then the reason I mention that is because I realize that the people on the far side of the street are gonna have to walk aways. That's not necessarily a killer, I just, I just bring that up. If the dumps, if, if you were to decide to have an additional dumpster, I would hope that it would be up on the other side closer to the other folk. See what I mean?
I understand your point.
Yeah.
I get, right, you don't want somebody living in this building...
He's gonna have to tramp all the way. Yeah. Well, if they have to, they have to. I can understand that, but, uh, I mean, simply adding a third dumpster down the bottom here wouldn't help at all, so. Wouldn't help that problem.
I, I think, I know, I just think, uh, living in a condo previously, you hear the trash in the back of the car and you go back and...
Yeah, that's how you do it. Okay. We have several ex-condo dwellers here.
I have to say the same thing.
Okay, all right.
Because having lived in both apartments and condos, um, you know, you go wherever you have to to dump off your trash. Having lived in a small town, you had to go a lot farther than you do in a condo.
Ah, but the dump had such good stuff.
It just doesn't strike me as a problem.
I was a kid. Okay, I think that just covers my concern on the dumpsters. We could certainly get that written in. Uh, did fifty-three G come up anywhere? Does it need to?
It, it should be discussed.
Yeah. And I presume it would just go with our usual, if, uh...
How many parking spaces do they currently have?
It'd be for the, only be for the increase, that's correct. That's correct.
I'll do a proof plan of what we could fit there now, based on zoning.
Yeah.
And just tell you, so we can figure out...
Yeah, I'm just, just figure out what the additional number of parking spaces in and we'll, that, that I think is more than adequate. We just need to have that number. Okay, before I open up the public hearing, are there any more questions on the board, from the board?
How many acres is the site?
One point eight-five.
Plus two with the half of Newfield.
That's true. That's, yes, if we add in Newfield, the R half.
Thirty-seven units.
Eighty-four thousand four hundred forty-four. Eighteen point...
On two acres.
Well, that's, that's near, that's near our peak.
High density.
That's high density.
High-density multifamily.
So you're putting high-density multi, we should have this discussion regarding RC. So three-quarters of this property where there's buildings being located is in RC. So I think that's what they're looking for approval tonight from, too, from this board. To put a multifamily, high-density, where under the zoning uses right now, it's not approved.
Uh, I believe, if I'm correct, that this is a pre-existing nonconforming and their, and their request is basically to understand that.
So if that's nonconforming, we're, we're just continuing the nonconforming.
Yeah, and we're, we're balancing, we're balancing additional load on the nonconformance against other aspects of the development of the project.
Expanding the nonconformity.
All for the improvements, I think it's great.
They're in front of you to, to expand the pre-existing nonconforming multifamily.
By doubling the size.
The, the scope and scale of that expansion is entirely up to...
Right, you're doubling the size of nonconforming. So that's what I want you to know.
Yeah, we understand that.
It can't be, under the zoning bylaw, the threshold is, it can't be substantially more detrimental...
Right.
Than what could ordinarily be placed there. So it's a balancing act in this particular case.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think there's some good arguments that, that this improves here. There was one other thing I was gonna mention. What the heck was it? No, I, I guess that just about covered it.
Yeah, I, I do have a comment, um, and it's kind of a response on the issue of affordable housing. And that is that the Inclusionary Housing bylaw, which is what we rely on in terms of adding, um, affordable units or payment in lieu, is specifically applicable to C O I Ds, the Village Center Overlay District and R M districts. And this is none of those.
Right.
So it is not a requirement for this...
Yeah.
Uh, this property. While we would certainly like to see it, um, it's not something that we can force at all.
Yeah, and it's also, it's also a good argument, although there's nothing we're going to do about it immediately for getting the zoning in town to match what's actually there. 'Cause if it matched what's actually there, this would be R M.
Well, that's exactly right.
But it's not, and that's where we're at.
And frankly, that block, pretty much that whole block there would be R M. Because that's what the use is.
It isn't, so we have to, we have to deal with the, the nonconformance. Okay, anything else from the board? Nothing?
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
I, I, I have, um, we, we talked about the improvements, so the improvements to the existing buildings. You're gonna be doing the roof, I mean, the roof's already done and then siding?
Well, I think, oh, sorry.
And that's it? The retaining wall?
We'll, I think, we have a list that's already, and that we would submit that list at the time of the preparation of a decision for inclusion within the decision, so we don't miss anything.
It's actually in the proposed pla, so in the plans, we have actually an architectural plan of the existing buildings. We show all the improvements, so it's part of your plan package.
So they're, are those units gonna be emptied and then...
No, literally everything outside.
They're gonna do interior as an abnormal process, change over, turnover.
What is the condition of the inside of these units? Out of curiosity...
It depends which one you look at.
Exactly.
So as people move out, they're going in and renovating.
Right.
But only as people move out.
What's the percentage of remodeled?
Out of the existing...
I think so far we're probably down at least, close to half of it. The turnover rate over there is very, very low, so...
So they've done half, but he's only, had been at the building for three years, if that, three, three and a half years.
What is your market rent there right now?
Um, we keep it really, really affordable by, by itself. Two-bedroom, thirteen hundred.
For a two-bedroom? Pretty good.
It's, it's...
That's including eat?
That is including eat.
I, my point, which, I didn't wanna get into, I didn't wanna get into all these details on public...
Oh, it is cheap, but the, there was not a lot of work done there, in all fairness, going by those buildings for a while, so...
Yeah, and I, and I'm very glad to see somebody digging in there and doing something with it.
Would it be, would it be in their better interest to jump on with the housing and, and create it affordable? They'd probably get more money.
I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure that that's...
Possible?
In, in the best interest of my client.
Okay, no, no, just, just asking, I just...
Well, we, we have, we have a plan before us and I think, I think what we need to do is look at it the way it is.
Funds that are available that the planning board does control for affordable, too.
That's true.
And I understand that. And I think that's something that we, we can look into and perhaps have a discussion at the next meeting to explore some of that. But as of now, I like to stick with the plans that are before you and we answer the questions that you presented and make sure that we don't get stuck on affordability or numbers of units and that we're gonna be prepared to go forward on as presented. If we're not, I'd rather know that now so my client doesn't incur a lot more expense. Respectfully, I mean, this was a very controversial project a year ago. It's been scrapped, you know, put to the side and we've come in with literally a night, it, it's incredibly different. And I just ask that when you use your discretion, that you don't go to attack the number of units. It, it's just, he's already figured out the numbers, he's already making the commitments and he's put it on the plan, so he's not hiding. He's putting it right out there. And I ask you, like you asked about respecting, you know, the reports you get from commissions, respectful we've submitted.
Yeah.
That's all I ask.
Good. Thanks.
All right.
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks.
Now, this is a public hearing and I will open it up to the public. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this project? Anybody? Ah, we got one.
Hi, Bill Vines, seventy-five Newfield Street. I own the property to the west of the paper road. This has been a long process over the last, close to a year now, um, from what was originally proposed. I've met with Doug and Katie several times. We've had sidewalks out there with the neighborhood and, and the different neighbors. It's a major improvement on that property for us. For myself, right now I get all the drainage, not all the drainage, but I'd say seventy-five percent of the water comes to my property 'cause it's lower than, than that. With the drainage that's being proposed, it will solve that problem for me. The paper road is very important to the neighborhood. If you remember last year, when it was first proposed, you probably, I think there was twenty-five people here because it was mentioned that the potential of using that paper street as a, as an entrance to this project. And I, if that was ever proposed, you'd have the same people back. But our concern is myself, Mr. Tassi and the owner of this property, applicant, is we wanna get that into our name so that this never becomes an issue. So I'm, I'm, I have a question as far as time-wise, it needs to be looked into with the process, how that's gonna be done so that we're all on board with how it's being done and, and I would hope that the costs for that would be borne by the applicant because he benefits from the, from the, from the street being used as part of the street for his property. But a question came up on the fences Nancy had on my property along, uh, I'd rather have the landscaping, the dense landscaping that's proposed. We've, we've really gone into a lot of work with Katie as for, uh, going over the different types of landscaping, so that's exactly what I'd like. I, I don't like fences, it looks cheap. And it was brought up by the Board of Health, possibly putting a dumpster two behind the building. I would, as an abutter, and I, I don't wanna speak for anybody else, but to have a dumpster on the backside of those buildings, too close, I'd rather have what they're proposing, pick up three times a week at the locations they have it now. Like I said, it's a major improvement via abutters. Their main concern was that paper street and the existing buildings. The other units that are proposed, least, less has been said about that than about what's there now and bringing that up to something we, that looks nice. So with all the work that he's proposing on these existing buildings and the upgrade of the parking, the drainage and landscaping, I think it's a great project. I think we're all benefiting from it. I would like to have any, that you do look at the other conditions and specify how that road's gonna be done, when it's gonna be done, so that we're not stuck with a project completed and we don't know what's going on with the road. It's not in our name. Those type of issues, you know, we want us, and anything that's not on the plan that's proposed that they are gonna do, such as picking up the dumpster three times a week. I'd like to be specific in the, if you guys can be specific in the other conditions so that we cover all the bases so there's no question later on down the road, because...
We most certainly can.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
To address Bill's comment, the applicant intends to absorb the costs associated with bringing this before the town to get the abandonment of the paper street.
Good, thanks. And we have one more? I bet you're the other...
Kent Tassi, sixty Gay Street. I just wanna verify. They moved the dumpsters. The dumpsters were on the other side before and that was not acceptable to the people on Gay Street. So that's why he moved it. I do think picking it up three times a week is a lot better than adding more dumpsters or spreading dumpsters throughout the property. They have, I will say this plan is light-years better than the last one. And they have been very open with talking to us, so I appreciate that. I definitely wanna say that paper road is a huge issue. If we worked something out, we're hoping that this is what you guys will allow it to happen. Because otherwise, we would book this room five times over and this wouldn't be going on. So I want you to be clear that that is, that whole neighborhood. We had people coming all the way from the other side of the library on Newfield Street about that road. That is a huge contention for this neighborhood. I also wanna just state, as much as mature trees and big tree, whatever we can get, the better. And I just talked to her about maybe even adding a little bit of room over here, over, um...
Just so you let me know, I'm right here, a little bit bigger trees here and if it's possible to shave a little bit of room. But other than that, this plan is so much better than anything we've seen thus far.
Great, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody, ah, we have one more speaker?
I know.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name's Scott Romo, twenty-four Lovett Lane. I think both the projects we've heard tonight are nice kinda visual improvements to, to the town, so that's great. I had questions about the new building. Are there elevators in the new building? No elevators. Are the apartments one-story or townhouse?
Garden-style.
Well, I don't know what garden-style means. One floor, all right. Are any of these sort of set up for seniors or do we anticipate seniors going in here somehow?
Maybe, I think so.
Some of them, some of them will be handicapped accessible, yes. There's a certain percentage that will have to be, or adaptable.
Is handicapped the same as senior? I'm not, I just...
No, no, that's not.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry.
Absolutely not, and that...
Okay, I'm, I'm just...
It's absolutely not. So you'll be able to walk in and be on the first story without having to walk up a lot of stairs. And there will be basically things you can do to age in place.
Okay.
Not specifically for fifty-five, or, or specifically for younger individuals.
I mean, okay, it's come up before, how important senior housing is to the community. Um, the last thing I have is...
Sure. You asked about stairs, that's what we're thinking. So for the six on the first floor, they, you don't need any stairs. You asked about elevator, right?
Yeah.
You don't really need to climb any stairs to access the...
They're, they're upgrade.
No, it's, it's come up, thank you. It's come up in, in other issues before the planning board about senior housing and that, and that. So I was just trying to make sure I understood. And what's come up on some of the other zoning board decisions is, is kind of the potential economic impact to the, to the town. And this is, this is the second, um, project brought before the board where we're not talking about kind of the economic impact. This looks like it's pretty good. Both of them look like they're gonna really improve the community, which is nice, but, you know, economic impact always seems to come up on, at least on the other project that I'm watching. And we don't, we don't discuss it here, so I'm curious. Am I, am I missing something? Is there a different meeting where it's discussed?
No, I think the economic impacts of it are pretty, pretty clear, given that it's an increase of eighteen units.
I think that's fantastic, but do we have any estimates, any numbers, right?
No, and I, I...
We never zone...
We do not zone for money.
Yeah, no, I didn't think so, but on the other project that I was kind of watching, the numbers came up and it was a very influential number.
They do, it depends on the nature, but this is, this is, remember, this is a project, this is not a zone. This is an individual project within existing zoning, so...
Okay.
Yep.
Well, we also have that option to evaluate whether or not you want to change the zoning.
I'm afraid not.
No? Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else? Okay, now, before I, before we close this public hearing, if we do, what do we, what do we still need to accomplish here? It sounds as if we're, we're pretty close, the question is, can we draft something now or do we need to leave it open to...
Can you leave it the same way the first hearing? Leave it open?
Yeah, we certainly can.
There's revised plans coming?
Okay.
Yes.
We'll get that.
We letters.
If that works for everybody.
Get a draft decision for the next meeting as well.
Yeah, can you do that?
Yep.
Okay. In that case, we can take a move.
The only thing that I would add is if they're redoing the, the second buildings on the outside, just have the fire, the fire department do a walkthrough of the apartments as they're going along. I know they're supposed, they're supposed to do it. One of the neighbors dragged me in when I was walking around there, and I'm telling you, those smoke detectors weren't working. It wouldn't hurt just to have them as part of the tradition, have the fire department walk through all the apartments and just make sure that everything's working.
Certainly wouldn't hurt.
Be happy to do that.
Yeah, that'd be...
Safety issue, absolutely.
Okay. That all said, and seeing as we have a little bit more material on the way, we, I could always take a motion to continue. Motion to continue.
Second.
One motion, one second, all in favor? Aye. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
So we'll see you now, what's that, is that continued to the twenty-seventh? Okay, we'll see you the twenty-seventh.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thanks Doug. Okay.
Katie, it looks nice.
Okay. Now, what we've got now, now let me do a little explaining here as, as the room, as a couple of people leave the room. We have three items that were potentially for the town warrant, at least they're listed on our agenda as such. That is the, let's see, the historic preservation and reuse, unfortunately, their meeting got snowed out last night. At this point, I don't see anybody here from historic, and it strikes me that at this point, without, without a formal, without, out anything formal on the table, we're going to have to, to continue this one, we're not going to be able to handle that public hearing tonight. Yep.
Take a motion for that?
Yeah, we'll take a motion, that's where I was going.
Make a motion that we move it to two weeks out.
Can we do that? Is it, I don't think we can do it two weeks out.
You could, you, you don't have a proposal, so...
Right.
There's really nothing to open.
Right.
On that particular article.
I mean, the proposal is the same as we...
Well, it's, it's not been through the, the historic commission, so we do not have a proposal.
And none of our other members have really read.
Nobody's read it, because it, it had, it did not get any degree of review by the historic.
Henry, the point is, at this point in time, it hasn't changed from the last one we put forward, and it won't until the historic commission provides some comments on it.
So, it is what it is.
We don't, we don't have...
What we have on the table is exactly the same as we put forward last fall, and there's no point in going forward with that if they didn't support it.
Okay, so, we're not going to, we're not going to entertain that tonight. The second one up, huh?
Did we vote on that?
I don't think that anyone even requires a vote.
No, he, he continued it, right? I seconded it.
Well, we are, my quest...
No, we voted to continue.
Hold on a second, guys. If we were to bring this up on the twenty-seventh, could we do anything about it in terms of, of April town meeting?
Sure.
Okay, there is enough time.
The premise is that the starting proposal is what was denied last, last fall town meeting.
And then we can, okay.
Now, only next Wednesday, there's going to be revisions, and that's what's going to show up here.
Okay. Then let's move, then let's move this to the twenty-seventh and we'll consider it then.
Yeah, so continue it to the...
Okay.
You got your continuing second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that will be moved. The second one on here is, well, it's actually the third one on the list, is the root work that the Route Forty Committee has been doing. That's not ready either, however, we very cleverly put an item of new business in for Route Forty. And what I would like to do at this point, although we are not having a public hearing on a Route Forty proposal, at least not at this stage, I want to get a status from the, from the Route Forty Committee, we can discuss that status and then, and then proceed from there. So, with that said, taking things slightly out of order, you're on Pam. And thanks, by the way, let me thank you an awful lot Pam for running, for running the Route Forty group.
You're welcome.
It's been a lot of work.
And thank you to the planning board for inviting us tonight so that we can give you an update. First, I wanted to mention the committee members, myself, Pam Armstrong, I live at Scotty Hollow, so I represent two-hundred-and-two residents or homes at Scotty Hollow, and not an exact abutter, but a very close abutter to the project. We have Virginia Timmons, who's our recording secretary, she's also a neighbor to the product, project and an abutter. Nancy Gillies, who resides within the area that's under discussion. Mike Walsh, who came on the board as a neighbor and abutter, he's currently on the planning board but represents his neighborhood as an abutter in the, in the committee. We have Emily Antoul, who's the selectman representative. Donald Van Dyne, who's the planning board representative, and Nancy Arroway, who's the planning board representative. So that's the committee that meets to discuss this. One of the very first things the committee did was to sit down and put together a mission statement, you know, what were we actually there for, what were we trying to accomplish, and what was the town asking of us? So we put together a, a mission statement that reads that we review the current zoning, we consider the impact of the area, the neighborhoods, the local business, and the town of Chelmsford, and we recommend the best use of the land for future development considering changes that may occur in the future. We then invited a lot of stakeholders to our meetings to do presentations and give us their input as to what they thought their impact, or our impact, would be on them for the Route Forty area. We spoke with, or had Linda Prescott come and speak on historical, from the historical commission. Kenny Pintuzzo, if I say that correctly, from the Vinyl Square Committee. John Edwards from the Housing Authority. Paul Cohen, the town manager. Evan Belansky, the Economic Development Coordinator, is that your right title?
No, but it's okay.
Close enough? Mike McCall from Traffic, you know, went over Traffic Studies. David Heddison from the Housing Authority. And we had some other input from the North Chelmsford Water and from Conservation Commission. So we tried to speak to anyone that might have some kind of a stakeholder in this particular area. We looked at the current zoning, which is on the south side, which abuts Lovett Lane and eventually Main Street, which is RC, and we looked at the north side, which has the first two-hundred feet of RC and the balance of IA. And just briefly, RC allows two-family on half-acre lots or single-family residents. And then we looked at all the possible options for the, both sides of the street, and we came up with seven alternatives, I'm just going to read them quickly. The first one was to do nothing. The second one is to change at the north side to CC, and three-hundred feet CC on the south side with an RM remainder, which is what the town had recommended for the last town meeting. To change the south side to RC and the north side to IA with a BAOD or other overlay. To change the south side to RB with the north side IA with a BAOD overlay or other overlay. The south side to be RB or RC and the north side to be CC. The north side to be IA with BAOD, south side RM inclusionary zoning or both sides CC. So we tried to look at all possible options that that land could be rezoned as, to be sure that we were really looking at the possibilities of what could go in there, what best fit the neighborhood, the people want to remain there, and what was best for the town. Some of the considerations were, could you apply the CIEOD or the BAOD in this area? What currently exists on Route Forty from Groton Center all the way to Vinyl Square? What is currently in town for development or redevelopment? And what is vacant and underutilized currently across town? What impact any change may have on the infrastructure, schools, taxes, water and sewer businesses, the area, town services, or business opportunities? What homes have sold or are under agreement in this area, and what homes remain occupied in the current area that the residents intend to stay in? What effect might it have on Main Street, Lovett Lane, or similar residents in the future? What businesses are currently along Route Forty and what else is currently along Route Forty from Groton to Vinyl Square? What did Westford allow in the Oak Street area? What if Revada Fletcher sell in the future? What does rezoning allow the asphalt plant the ability to do? How much increased traffic can the area handle? Is there going to be any light, sound, or smell pollution to the area residents? And what kind of landscaping aesthetics or setbacks would have to be considered? So we think that we were very comprehensive in all the areas that we looked at and took into consideration for this particular area. We then compared IA zones to RB and RC zoning to find out, based on the zoning that we were looking at, what would be allowed by the underlying zoning and what wouldn't be allowed. And then we looked at some overlay possibilities to allow additional possibilities to the area. Where we're at today, we're considering, and again, we have not made any final recommendations, we have no final votes at this point, we're, we're getting close, so this is what we're considering right now. Leaving the south side RC. This way, the residents that currently live there can remain in their homes with not a, you're shaking your head, am I wrong?
No, no.
Oh. Considering leaving the south side RC, so the, the residents that are going to stay can stay in their homes comfortably and allow for two-family or single-family residents to be built in that area. We took a look at homes that had sold on Groton Road and Westford and in Chelmsford, and they're currently selling at market rates, so we thought that there was no detriment to the value of homes, whether they become new homes or existing homes, they would maintain their market rate on the south side. This would also allow future development of the area with needed housing, if we put in some two-family housing, it increases some of the needed housing in that area, and maintains the buffer to the neighborhoods and abutters that are also on that side of the street. It also prevents in the future anyone buying property on the Main Street or Lovett Lane or any abutting areas and then taking any zoning that was changed on Route Forty and trying to bring it back further into those neighborhoods. So it would, again, try to maintain the residential aspect of that entire south side of the street. On the north side, that was a lot of discussion and consideration. And after listening to all the people that presented to our board, it seemed that the town, more than anything else, needs some kind of senior or age-in-place housing, that the lists for this type of housing is considerably long, that people wait probably past their lifetime and not be able to get into the homes that they need. This would not only be senior housing, but any kind of facility that would, again, age in place. So you may have somebody who has a head trauma, or maybe someone has early Alzheimer's that's not a senior yet, it needs to be in a, in a facility that would be able to take care of their needs. So we don't want to call it a senior overlay, we're calling it an age-in-place overlay. It's going to be heavily looked at as a senior-type facility, but we're not eliminating other people that may need these facilities. And along with this overlay, we're looking at what else would be needed, what kind of amenities or services or facilities would fit in this type area that would complement an age-in-place facility. And so what we're looking at now is what zoning we would propose on this side of the north side, whether we leave the first so many hundred feet RC and the rest IA with an overlay to the whole area that would allow more density and housing, because a lot of these type units don't need the same kind of living area as, as other type housing in towns. We could have a stronger density in that area, and we could incorporate more, more services in that area that would complement it. It's very close to the senior center, it's very close to all the outreach at Lowell General up at Drum Hill, so it seemed to complement the area. It reduces the impact on the school system and on the traffic, because there's less cars used and there's less children that would be in the, in the increased density living. So the underlying zoning would be there if somebody didn't want to take advantage of the overlay, the overlay would be there if they wanted to take advantage of it, and we gave them the opportunity to develop that area for a need that we strongly see in town. So that is pretty much where we're at with our committee. Our next meeting is March fourth. We welcome anyone to come to the meeting, and at the end of every meeting, we open it up for public input, so people can share with us anything they heard that night or any thoughts that they have about the Route Forty area that they want to share. And I thank all the members of the committee for coming tonight, and if anyone has any questions, we'll try to answer, and if I didn't cover something I should have, please speak up.
Thanks, thanks an awful lot Pam. They've worked hard. I am not myself a member of the committee, but I've been going to all the meetings, so I've been watching, and a lot of work has been done, far more than I've seen in some other situations like this. Now, this is not a public hearing in the sense that it's a public hearing on a proposal for the warrant. However, I want to open it up to the public, because I know there are a number of people here that, that wanted to and, and will make some comment or observation, and I want to give you a chance. So with that, is there anybody that would like to ask a question or make a comment on this? I mean, I see several members of the Board of Selectment here that may want to say something. I see...
How about the board members?
And the board members as well.
Board members first or the public?
I was going to go with the public, but, yeah, let's...
Yeah, Mr. Diggs up. He's halfway there, we don't want to turn him around now.
Yeah. Right. Hi Glenn.
Once you go in one direction, it's not easy. Blow back. First, I'd like to thank the committee for all the work they've done. Obviously, I've been to some of the meetings, talked to some of the people who have also been there when I'm not there, and there's a lot of work being done and so forth. You know, it was disappointing in some ways that this did not make the last town meeting, but it certainly understood. As it played out, it seemed that that was the right decision to make, that it really was a cake that had not been properly baked or put together to go into the oven. But, you know, it's complicated from the standpoint of, you have a north side and a south side, which are pretty much a recreation of a problem that the town didn't create, it just was a matter of time. In the early, in the late eighties, I lived in Westford, and I went up and down Route Forty occasionally, and it always seemed like it was a country road, like many country roads. But as time has evolved, Westford developed more housing on the backside of their town, they have developed more industry along Route Forty. Meanwhile, Chelmsford hasn't really had a concerted effort to have a plan in place for the development of that area. And thus, you have residences in an area that is getting increased traffic every day. The asphalt plant hasn't opened yet, that's going to put a burden on it. Westford has improved their road, and in theory, they're going to be putting more development there. So it's an area where traffic is going to get worse and worse every day. And you have houses along there that have had to endure, through no fault of their own or no plan of anyone's, more and more traffic and more of an area that is not conducive to someone who would want to live there. So you have that situation, and you have, at the same time, you have some very nice houses on the backside of it that come in from a different direction. And who would like to keep it as it is now? When you go up there, national grid, clear cut, an eighty-foot path across the whole back of the yard, which no one would like to see, but that kind of opened it up a little bit. And then you have the north side where there's a lot of industry in there, but it's really not controlled the way it should be controlled, and that the planning board should have a, a say in how it should be developed in a cohesive manner. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a little bit disappointing to see that the recommendation is to leave the south side, or not the recommendation, but the general feeling is that the south side should stay as residential or that you can put two families. Well, if you have an area that is getting more and more traffic all the time, I don't know who would want, going to want to move there as a residential. And on the north side, if you're saying that you want to cater it to senior housing, well, it's a good idea, we had proposed that, and there was a study put together for the West Campus of where Wang was, that that was the underlying tone of what they came forward with, and we don't know where that's going, it's going up for auction in April. It's a good idea, but the idea is, can a developer come in and make money putting in something that's senior housing? something that's senior housing? Because there's not a lot of money there, and if there's no money there, really, nothing's going to happen. So it's a very difficult, you know, idea. But I think it needs, whenever it comes up, you could put some sort of perhaps barrier or buffer behind the south side at the back of those lots to keep them away from any kind of proposed development. I would assume that you could put something in so that businesses that would be offensive, let's say a gas station that's open 24 hours with lights blaring, that that doesn't go on the south side. In other words, allowing development, but control development. And there was a lot of, when this came up the first time, there was a lot of distraction because of the developer and the reputation of the developer. And, you know, I for one on the planning board, I'm not speaking for the Board of Selectmen, but as a member of the Board of Selectmen, you know, we have a lot of faith in our planning board, we have a lot of faith in the building department, that, you know, you're not going to allow some shoddy construction developer come in and do whatever he wants. It's not going to happen. And so it's not so much about who, as opposed to the rules and living by the rules. And, you know, we have faith that the planning board understands the economic needs of the town and would come up with a concise plan to enable development up there, but in a way that's fair to all the neighbors. You know, the people who live on the road right now, I have to believe they hate living there, based on the traffic. And so they have concerns, the people who live behind there have concerns, and the last time, they were basically not consulted when it was brought forward. And this time, they've had ample time to bring their concerns forward, and that's the way it should be. So, again, we're looking at it, as far as I'm looking at it, as a standpoint of, you know, we would trust whatever the planning board came up with an overall plan for that area. You've been looking at it for a long time, you have listened to a lot of people, and we have conf, I have confidence that you would come up with a great plan in the end. So, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Glenn, and you make some very good points. Hi.
Hi, my name's Marie Burnham.
Yep.
I live at 255 Groton Road, and I wasn't expecting to speak tonight, I came to here. I wasn't able to attend a couple of the meetings because I was sick for the past couple of weeks, well, five weeks. But I listen to Glenn, and I'm tired from people --
Please address your stuff to the board, not to people out in the audience.
Okay. I'm tired of people who know nothing about my neighborhood, talking about what I want and what I don't want, what I like and what I don't like. I trust the people on the subcommittee. I did not know about the aging in place, but I'm 63, and I'm trying to age in place. Okay? But between Westford and Chelmsford, nobody's allowing me to. Okay? They're trying to pre-age me in place to my deathbed. I'm at an age where I don't need this high blood pressure or the stimulus for it. Okay? I have a home, I'm in my 26th year there. Okay? No, there wasn't the amount of traffic that we have now.
Ma'am?
Okay.
Please address the board.
Okay, no, we have more traffic than we did before, but that's because mostly of residential development in Westford, okay, on an old quarry, okay, the Greystone Development. Those are people with the same wants and desires as the rest of us in this residential section of North Chelmsford, okay? We're getting kicked between Westford and Chelmsford, okay, as if we're unimportant. And again, I want to age in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay? Got out of a deathbed to find the home I'm in now.
Okay.
Okay. Now, those are people, they have kids. Some of their kids have just graduated college. When they moved in, they had the babies. As far as the businesses, the industrial businesses behind me, and I mean literally behind me, okay? I have Drum Hill Construction. Ronnie does excavation, dirt, snow plowing, and assorted other trucking businesses, okay? There's a moving company, and a bunch of people with rakes and a couple of different companies that go around cleaning your yard, your yard, your yard, and everybody's yards for a fee, okay? There's also Revards that moved in. They wash and sell trucks. They took over where the National Bus Co, not, the Chelmsford Bus Company left off, because the bus company was right there, okay? We don't have a big mirage of businesses. We don't have a toxic waste disposal dump, which Westford stopped back in the 80s for where you were talking about developing there, and there was agreements that that kind of stuff would never go in, okay?
If you'll excuse me a bit, we're wandering a bit far afield here.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about my neighborhood.
Yeah.
Everybody else is talking about my neighborhood who don't understand it.
Keep it brief, if you could.
Okay. But understand, my neighborhood has fought to stay a neighborhood for decades, okay? Now, we just had a nine-year fight over asphalt, and they got in with all kinds of concessions. You change that from residential, even just my northern side, I guess the northern side isn't as important as the southern side, but my northern side is where they're located. You change that, and you change the neighborhood altogether, and you've just negated most of the concessions that they've needed to make because of the residential population. So now you're looking at asphalt possibly moving into Chelmsford, or at least invading Chelmsford the way they're invading other towns on the other side of the quarry.
Asphalt cannot invade Chelmsford, it is completely out.
Asphalt plant can't come in, but there's nothing that'll stop their trucks from going through there.
Well, that, I'm afraid, is a state road, and that is nothing over which we have control.
And you guys keep making this mistake over and over again, like you don't care about knowing my street. It is a town street, state-numbered, and only state-maintained, from halfway in front of Revard's driveway to just before Scotty Hall's building.
We cannot limit the asphalt trucks on it.
No, you can't.
Am I correct, Evan?
Right.
We cannot limit them?
Right, you can't.
So, yeah.
So, you change our stuff, our zoning, and what we have there, okay? And you give them reason not to have to follow certain constraints and restrictions that have been put in place by the air quality control and everything else.
We have, we have already checked that there, regardless of what zoning may or may not occur there, there will be no relief on the part of the asphalt plant to any of the terms of their agreements.
With the town of Westford or with the state quality?
We cannot control the town of Westford.
Right.
I am only talking about the town of Chelmsford.
Okay.
We cannot relieve them.
Okay.
So it, you know, and we're not, certainly wouldn't if we could.
Right.
So that, that's something that's outside of our control.
Okay, now, if you put in the elderly and aging in place places, that's still residential, no matter how you look at it.
Mm-hmm.
It may be institutionalized residential, but it's still residential.
But fundamentally, it was, well, parts of it and the services that go with it.
That's perfectly acceptable.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? Having a Jiffy Lube isn't.
Well, I don't, yeah.
Having a McDonald's isn't. Having a drive-in isn't.
I think, I think it's a little premature here, because nothing that has been discussed that I know of, that's made it to the, made it to the top of the soup, involves such things.
I like the aging in place concept.
Okay. Thank you.
I like the aging in place.
Many people do.
Okay.
Many people do, and --
You want to throw a car wash in, fine, everybody needs a car wash.
I don't think we're looking at a car wash.
Okay. Well, that's what Revard's doing.
Yeah, unfortunately, it is, but he's been there a long time.
Because his cars are big 18-wheelers.
I know, I'm well aware.
Okay, but my point is, is tired people from the other sides of Chelmsford, from outside of Chelmsford, who have no idea of our neighborhood, talking about what we want and we don't want. We have a subcommittee who knows what we want.
Yeah.
Okay? You've heard what we want.
So if, yeah.
I'm not the only one you've heard from.
Oh, definitely not. So if I, if I could summarize what you're saying, you're saying, let, let the committee complete its work.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay?
And, oh.
And keep listening to us.
Thank you, we will do that.
And stop listening to what people who don't know us say we want. We'll tell you what we want.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I suspect you're not the only person who wants to speak. Folks, if you could keep it brief, because this could go on a very long time.
I got a question.
Yeah, you go, go ahead, Don.
Serving on this committee and also on the planning board, and given the nature of this meeting tonight, it seems to me we're going down the path of a public hearing, therefore, why, given the report that Pam delivered, I don't foresee, being a member of that committee, that much is going to change as far as the zoning recommendation. We have addressed and put all the pieces of the puzzle on the table, which Pam presented this evening. I propose that actually, we open the public hearing and let these people talk tonight.
I, I am very reluctant to do that without an actual copy of something being presented. I understand what your point is, but, but I'm, I'm not inclined, obviously, the board can do what it wants.
What if they don't come forward with something?
We will. Oh, I don't think there's any doubt. So they were within a meeting. We were very close.
Yeah.
Okay? And we asked Evan to come to the meeting. He came with some very, very good suggestions.
Yeah.
And just clarified some of the thought processes that we were going through. He heard our vision.
Yeah.
Okay? The group was very, very close.
Yeah.
I think we're one or two meetings away, couple of meetings away, from, from solidifying this. However, there was the question of IA, there was the question of RC, Don, then there was a question about the one property that we've included in this, where in the original proposal from the town, did not have that property included, and we didn't get a chance to vet that out yet. And I think we need to allow the committee to vet all of those concerns that came out and the good suggestions that Evan put forward at the last meeting, vet it out if it's worthwhile or not, put it part of the overlay, and then figure out the exact zoning that came up. Because there was a discussion, it was all over the place, as you agree, the last meeting. We had things locked down, then there was a discussion about going, we had the south side locked down for weeks, and then we were going on to the north side. And then, then the discussion went north side, it went sideways on us, and then the south side opened back up again. So there's questions about trying to come to the spring meeting right now, town meeting, for the north side overlay, and then in the fall of this year, to come with the south side. Those are discussions that are taking place, you're aware of those discussions.
I'm very much aware of that.
And, but, but the south side.
And I do not believe that represents best practices for zoning.
I agree, but the, the south side, best practices for zoning, look, we just were looking at the previous one. You're, you're still non-conforming, you're just continuing it. And so, and here, you're taking the biggest zoning that we've ever done in town for 20 years, 29 years, and you're trying to rush this. I think you need to, we're pretty close, and I think anything --
I think they're rushing this. I, I think there's actually been a lot of dialogue, therefore, that's why Pam was able to make that presentation she did. I think this committee has flushed out a lot of different issues and put a lot of different zoning perspectives on the table.
Right. So right now, in front of me, I have two overlays that are two different named overlays, and they're not the overlay that Pam called out. So there's three versions of the overlay, you got to let the committee finish, and then bring it to this table for a vote.
I think before we have any too much more of the public input on it, we should let them finish their job, come with a plan, with one plan, then everybody knows what everybody's talking about, everybody can sit down and hash that out, instead of trying to hash out what they think is going to happen.
Right, right. I would, I would, I would share that view with you. Totally agree. I'm not, I'm not against people making some comment here, but again, we're not, we're not drafting.
They could go to the committee meetings to make their comments.
We can do that.
What's the sense of making comments on something that may or may not happen?
Right.
It's just talking.
Committee meeting for that.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that inasmuch as I'm the, the committee member that's doing the drafting, while we have a very mature draft at this point, we have a number of issues in that draft that are absolutely up in the air, and they are critical issues. So I don't think that this draft, in any one of the forms that we currently have available, is ready to go to a public comment session, because there are critical issues that have to be addressed by the Route 40 committee first and, and decided.
Can I, can I make a suggestion here? Can I get a straw poll of the board? How many, how many of the board feel that this should go back and get completed by the, by the Route 40 committee?
Well, it's not completed at all right now, right?
No, no, it needs, it needs additional meetings of the Route 40 committee.
Have them come back with a plan.
Have it come back with it, yeah.
With, with a plan.
Yeah.
With a plan.
Okay, and I just, this is just a straw poll, but I want to see what the sense of the board is. And I would say I'm in favor of having the --
Can I ask a question for the head of the committee?
The committee chair, yeah.
For the committee chair, how do you feel at this point?
I, I agree with Mike, we're very close, we're probably maybe two meetings out and we'll be finished. But it's not to a point that we could actually present something yet, and I think we'll be able to address a lot of things that Mr. Diggs brought up as well, when we actually do our formal presentation. But I think if we could have just like a little bit more time, we'll have something very clear for you.
Yeah, that's --
That works, I like that.
So you're, you're in favor of letting it --
In favor of letting them finish their job.
Yeah. One, two, three, four, five, six. All right, I think that's, and seven?
I gotta move my chair.
You do gotta move your chair.
You're not voting member, except for --
I think, I think that's what we need to, but go ahead, Don, because you, I know you've got a somewhat different view, and I want to hear what you've got.
Right, so the committee makes a recommendation.
Right.
What's the planning board going to do with it?
That would come to us as a planning board. We are, we not, not the Route 40 committee, are the committee that would, that would recommend whatever we came up with. It becomes our responsibility, well, it's our responsibility all the way through, but at that point, we would have something that's thoroughly coherent to work with.
We have the meeting and talk it out.
Then we have the meeting and we talk it out, and --
But we don't really even have anything that the public can even comment on right now, so, right? Because we don't have --
Three different drafts don't match up yet. Right. No sense.
And I, I for one, I totally agree with that, I'd like us, I'd like the committee to finish its work.
Is there a problem with getting this on the spring?
The only real, the, yeah, that's not going to, it's not going to get onto the spring. And that's the thing I think that's bothering most people.
Right.
That it does --
Well, it could make it to the spring. The idea was, no, the idea was, this committee would have come this evening with a recommendation.
Yeah, and that's what we had very much hoped.
Given, given the guidelines you gave us in the very beginning.
Right.
We had the mission, and you said, let's get this to a Springtown meeting.
Right.
That's what the committee was formed to do, that's what our target was to do. We were expected to come this evening with a recommendation to deliver to the planning board to make it to Springtown meeting.
Yeah, which we --
Which we did not manage to do.
Which we did not manage to do, and I think we, we --
But we could still make it to the Springtown meeting.
We telegraphed that punch quite some time ago, so.
Nobody else in the wing is trying to bring this forward without, without us?
Well, that's what I wonder about, but I don't think anybody is. Yes, go ahead, Pam.
So there's no way you can leave a placeholder on Springtown meeting? There's no way you can leave a placeholder on Springtown meeting, and if we finish this in another meeting or so, you still have time for a public hearing and to bring it forward?
What are, Evan, could you, Evan, could you speak to the, the technicalities of the public hearings? And this is, this is where things like the next, our next, your, your next meeting being out in the beginning of March are a bit problematic, although I recognize it was simply because people couldn't make it to an earlier meeting. But go ahead. What are the, what are the constraints?
So the, the major constraint is that the Board of Selectmen are scheduled to sign the warrant on Monday, February 25th. In order for final language, working draft, final language, whatever we want to call it, it needs to be at the town manager's office no later than Thursday morning, the 21st, so that town council can then review the entire warrant for the Board of Selectmen's packet, which goes out on Friday prior to the weekend. So that's the real constraint.
So it's the wording of the warrant article that they have to approve?
Right, well, the legal advertisement's taking place.
Okay.
Right, so the, the hearing was scheduled to open this evening. If it's open this evening, it could be continued to next Wednesday. But that's really the constraint is the starting point for all warrant articles is what's in the Board of Selectmen's warrant. From there, as we all know, it can, it can be amended at the planning board hearing, it can be amended at town meeting floor. But as many of us are aware, that becomes very cumbersome and usually confusing and not viewed very favorably at town meeting. So I think normally the goal that the planning board has is have a final draft that is, you know, not, not continuing to be debated, but maybe slightly refined, minor, minor edits. So that's, the constraint is really the Monday, the 25th.
Yeah, let me, let me put another item in there. There are complications that arise when you start to amend something that's been put on the warrant. You are limited to, you're allowed to reduce the scope, but you can't increase the scope. What is reducing the scope? What is increasing the scope on a complex zoning article such as, for example, a proposed overlay? Questions like that can get very, very murky indeed. So you really want to have very close to your final language.
Other than maybe changing some numbers, you really don't want to be.
Changing, changing a number or moving a comma.
Yeah.
And you shouldn't feel rushed. I mean, the, the one thing the residents said was, you know, slow down, take time. And I think that was loud and clear.
Yeah.
My only thought on this is, you've heard the update.
Yes.
You've heard what's kind of being contemplated.
Mm-hmm.
For purposes of, I think, speaking to Donald's question, ultimately, the planning board is going to take ownership of it.
Right.
Now may be a good time for the planning board to give any, any straw poll direction if it so feels strongly enough.
And that's, that's exactly where I was headed.
Right, okay.
Good. And I mean, the first piece of direction is, do we want to try to force this on to the April town meeting warrant or not? And I think the vote that I've seen looks like it's probably at least six of us say, no, we should not push this on to April town meeting. Now, who knows, where there may be a special town meetings in the summer sometime, or we may have to wait to fall to get this on there. But I have very little doubt that this will all be wrapped up.
I'm not against pushing it or trying to, but doesn't sound like they're, we're ready to even comment on it.
Their job isn't done.
Okay, so that's the first piece. Is there any guidance that the planning board, again, by, by straw poll, if you will, would like to give to the committee that's working on this, given that they, they probably only have one or two more meetings to go? And then that's the end of the committee and we, we thank them and, and it lands in our lap?
Yeah.
So if there's any guidance that anybody feels we should give them.
I've been in some other towns that have 40R or whatever you want to call it every time. They're a nice development.
Yeah.
They really are. They're, they're nice, they're clean.
They're needed.
They're really nice. I mean, I wouldn't be even opposed for it to be on the south side, but that's beside the point. But they, I think you should also, whatever we take and do, maybe underneath the power lines have a no development zone at all. But you gotta give them something to be able to do that.
Right.
You know, if they've, if, if you didn't want a parking lot underneath here, if you didn't want to do something, you have to give them something because the existing lane, existing that's there allows something. But, you know, you just leave it the way it is.
Well, maybe you could put duplexes in there now.
Yeah, I know, I know. But it's just, you're gonna end up with duplexes on top of duplexes on top of duplexes, or you can try to do something.
Okay.
The good thing about retired people is they don't party at night.
Oh, really?
They don't have a lot of. It survives the next day very well.
My 70th birthday is this summer. I plan to be retired soon and I'm going to party.
No, but they, they're, they're very quiet neighbors.
Yeah, they are. Okay.
We got a couple of them in town, but.
All right, I, I think, I think we've, we've given some sense and some guidance at least. The sense of the board is that the Route 40 committee finish its work. I would ask, but Pam already knows this and so do all the other members, do it quickly if you can, rather than slowly. And when we get something, we can deal with it, we can review it. Even if it's not gonna make it onto April town meeting, we can have it done, ready, and in our back pocket and ready to go if either a special town meeting comes up in the summer or at the latest in the fall.
So is there a presentation that's done after we, the recommendation's made from the committee to the planning board?
Well, then it becomes the planning board's baby.
But then to take it to the public, because the public still doesn't know the full story they got tonight for the first hand.
Yeah, well, I think what we would probably do is we would probably lift the Route 40 committee's presentation and use that with modifications to present to the town. That's, that's the direction, that's typically the kind of thing that happens.
Bottom line, it's gonna end up on the town, it's gonna end up at town meeting floor.
Yeah, and.
They need a two-thirds vote to pass.
And the story better be good.
Yeah, it just, it needs, it needs, it's gonna go in front of town meeting.
Yeah.
And that's who's gonna make the ultimate decision.
So before, before we move on, like, from perspective of other planning board members outside of those that serve on the committee, is there anything else that you would suggest to the committee?
The only thing I, like Henry said, that on the south side where the power lines are, I would think start your buffer zone there and bring it into the project. So then people have, once the power company clear cuts the power lines, like you do every six or eight years, you don't have, it's not gonna be right up tight against the houses.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be, that's gonna be their dumpster pads of their parking lots and then the people that live out there have to look at that all the time.
Yeah, we've, we've seen that before. Okay.
But you gotta give them something to get something.
Uh, I, yep. Yeah, just a comment to the rest of the board.
Yep.
This is being drafted as an overlay that could be used in other places. Give that some thought.
Yeah, yeah, we've actually, we've considered the possibility that this or something very much like it could be applied to the West Campus, depending on how that develops.
Happens with that.
So, okay, I think, I think we've landed that where we want to land it. I think, I mean, we could hear one or two more people. On the other hand, I think the best place to bring the commentary now will be to come to our Route 40 committee meetings. It's a little less packed, it's a little less formal. They're right here.
And when is it, March?
March 5th. 5th is the next one.
Okay, I just want to make a couple of comments. I'm Roger Power, I live at 258 Groton Road, south side.
Well, I'll, I'll let you do it. Go ahead, make it quick, please.
I'll be very quick. And with all due respect to Marie, it's, it's not a neighborhood. And, and the south side needs, something needs to be done.
Okay.
We don't want to, the people on the south side, most of us, I can't speak for everybody. I know there's a family over here that wants to stay. We all want out.
Okay.
And I get you want to keep your neighborhood the way it is, and I understand that. But there has to be something done. There, we have plenty of land on that side. You will not, you can keep trees and everything in place and still have something on that side. It doesn't have to stay the way it is, because that does not work. It's not a neighborhood.
Come to our committee meeting.
I will absolutely.
Come to the committee meetings, I think that's the place to say it.
I will absolutely be there.
Absolutely. That'd be great. Good to, it'd be good to see you.
Because for the south side to get shut out of this and just to be able to put elderly housing on the other side, it doesn't.
Do you own 258 Groton Road?
I do.
You do, okay.
Yep.
All right, well, come, come to that meeting and, and, and we'll, we'll discuss in more detail.
Can we take one more?
I have one fellow standing, both these people were standing.
Just real quick, if I can, Dan Castellano, 245 Groton Road.
Yep.
I live, I, the corner of Wardway in Groton Road.
Yes, yes, I know where that is.
So I'm kind of surrounded by industry. It's all around, I'm probably in the worst possible spot you could ever be in. And I wanted to thank Mr. Diggs, because he was right on the money when he said, some of us, I've been there my whole life, since 1955. And I just, it's just, the past three years are almost unbearable. You can't sleep there and it's just.
Trucks.
Some, some of the people on the board were at my house and on my porch. Mike, he was on there. And Mr. Van Dym, he was on there, Van Dye, he was on there. And you know yourself, you're standing on my porch, you can't even hear yourself talk to somebody sitting next to you. And it's just, it's very, very loud and progress has overgrown the area.
Bring that, bring that, bring that to the committee meeting.
And I will, I will.
That's the best place for us to deal with it.
And my house is not under any agreement with anyone.
Okay.
I own the house. And I think it's like four, out of 10 houses on the north side, there's four of us that still own the house that are not under any agreement. I'm one of them.
Understood.
And, but I mean, I just feel that something has to be done. It's just, and it's so sad, because.
Well, come, come to our meeting and.
I'll be there.
It's a pretty.
I will thank you.
It's a pretty good group.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. Okay, that said, I believe that that leaves us in the position of saying that we will not follow through with this immediately, that we will let the committee finish its work. And thank you very much, committee. And I'll be at your next meeting. I don't miss them. I wouldn't miss any of them. Don't think I have. All right, we have one more item on here.
You want to take five?
Yeah, you want to take five? Would people like a break?
We have a lot left.
No, I just want to get done. It's getting late.
Let's go through it.
Bow on.
Henry can make a motion. Let the crowd leave. Give people a minute to, to clear their seats.
Just scratch. That was tough.
Hey, what happened, dude? You haven't got your.
Second set of steroids. Here you go, dear.
Yeah, but at least you're getting around.
But you can move. Yeah, I can't, still can't go upstairs, but I'm walking. You're walking. You're walking, you're not on a walker. No, no, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you all. Hey, folks, if we could, if we could get our meeting rolling again. Please, wait a minute.
You got the gavel.
I got the gavel. I've never used it.
Right here, right on that.
Okay, thank you all. Okay, the next order of business up here is an amendment to the Route 129 Business Amenities Overlay District, better known as BOD, to permit in certain situations some drive-throughs. And we do have a formal write-up for this one. Are you gonna bring it up?
May not be able to come up, but you each have hard copies of it.
Yeah, we do have hard copies.
There are hard copies over here on the.
Yeah, and I know we've reviewed this.
Built-in over there.
This is what we already.
This has several, two minor revisions from the last version you saw.
Where is it?
It's in your.
It's in the packet.
In the packet.
Nan.
I didn't get that one.
I didn't get that one. I got two copies of something else.
I got two copies of the other one, too.
Yeah.
There, you want to look at that?
Yeah, yeah, I want to look at it.
Okay, so the two, the two.
You can have my copy.
The two editors are on page two. At the last meeting, this board agreed to eliminate the existing letter I, no more than blank per entire district.
Yep.
And then we received some public comment about the desire and interest to regulate the hours of the drive-through.
Yeah.
I reached out to that particular town meeting rep. This is the language that they provided me. They're recommending that the drive-through would only be allowed to be open from 5:30 a.m. to 10 p.m.
That's pretty broad, that's, that's, that's a pretty broad time span.
Yeah, same as the gas station up the street from me in 110 then.
Yeah.
So those are the, those are the two revisions. In the previous meeting, you've seen visual examples of kind of the concepts we're trying to encourage and concepts we're not trying to encourage. We talked about the, kind of the letters A through I and the strategies behind that. I do have a visual, we didn't print it out. Was this one working? Romance.
Ooh.
That's a, that's a nice visual.
I'm trying to get this one back up.
Can you bring up the designated properties?
Charlie Brown Valentine.
On letter A, I revised it to say Bill Ricka Road to the Bill Ricka Town Line. And the visual you'll see that comes up, we'll have ready for town meeting. It will identify each of the properties along Bill Ricka Road and Mill Road that are eligible for, for citing of a fast casual with drive-through. I like that better than just saying the Mill Road, that's, that's a lot more clear. Right, but that's just gonna be a visual. Yeah.
Yeah.
To explain letter A.
So all of those properties?
Yeah, they're, they would all be located along Mill Road within, you know, not outside, not within the exclusion zone. That's why it stops at 282, 284 Mill Road, the property that town meeting put into the commercial overlay last fall. And then the entire length of Bill Ricka Road to the Bill Ricka Town Line. So while they're, while they're all eligible, many of them, for a variety of reasons, will never pursue.
Yeah.
The opportunity.
Yeah.
They'll never pursue any, any amenity opportunity. And the other side of Route 3, there's a small piece of property there that's still, is that the one that's? The first, the dirt pile. That's the dirt pile, that's, that's out there, all right. Correct. The overlay does not, does not, the overlay is not on the other side of Bill Ricka Road on, across from the dirt pile.
Yeah.
Just on that little triangle.
Yeah.
So the dirt pile could have a drive-through.
Yeah.
Well, the dirt pile's gone. There's no dirt there anymore. This trail is there now.
Dirt park, the dirt pile is actually a pretty good use of drive-through.
Do we have a public input or?
No, we will, we will get to that. We will get to that. Okay, so that's.
I know, I, I have, I have some other visuals here.
Yeah.
If you, if we, based upon the questions, we can show them.
That, I think, I think that makes sense. This is a somewhat technical article and I think.
Let's see what that is. I think that just may be the, the history. This is the, the original fact sheet that I gave the board probably two meetings ago.
Yep.
Explaining kind of the, the history, the why. Okay.
Very good. Okay, any comments from the board before I open it up to public hearing? I'm good. All right. Now, this is a public hearing on the adjustments to the 129 Business Amenities Overlay District.
Hey, Katie. Good evening.